Good afternoon. Vice President. Good afternoon. Vice President Diane Nicolet here. President Taylor is delivering some food to her mother, and she will be here shortly, so I am beginning the meeting for us. We will start by saying it is, you know, I can't see the glare on that clock, about 2:17? 2:20, meeting to order at 2:20. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. President Taylor is currently delayed. Vice President Nicolet?
Present.
I am here. Trustee Church?
Here.
Trustee Mayberry?
Here.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
And our student trustee is hopefully in class. We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Next, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. And if we could please have trustee Jeff Church lead us in the pledge. I am having our Board General Counsel guide me because we have added, reintroduced, if you will, the action to adopt the agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order by the Board. The Board may combine two or more agenda items for consideration. The Board may remove any item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda any time. I'm looking for a motion? No? Comment? Public comment? Public comment? Thank you. Thank you.
I will be removing some consent over to the main agenda.
That'll be at the next item.
That's the next item. I know we're reintroducing ourselves. I totally understand, to this action to adopt the agenda. So, to reiterate, are we going to combine any issues? Are we going to approve the agenda as is? Trustee Smith?
Thank you, Vice President Nicolet. I'd like to move that the Board of Trustees approves the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes, six to zero. Next. Public comment? Yes, again?
Not yet.
Not yet. We will move on to 2.01, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items 2.02 through 2.18 for possible action. Now, what should he say about this? Okay. I'm getting fabulous tutelage.
Your help is back.
Right, my help is back. "All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of Trustees with one action and without an extensive hearing. Since approval of the consent agenda may be approved in one motion, members of the public wishing to speak on a consent agenda item should submit a public comment card prior to any vote. Members of the public may also email public comments to publiccomments@wachoschools.net. Any member of the Board may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. The President or Vice President retains discretion in deciding whether or not an item will be removed from the consent agenda." Yes.
You're right. Are we passing it all?
We are. We are passing the gavel.
Okay. I guess we introduced consent agenda, passing the gavel. All right, good job, Dr. Diane. Thank you.
More practice indicated.
Yes, okay. Thank you. I apologize for being late. I knew I'd be cutting it close. So, thank you, Vice President Nicolet. Looks like we're on the consent agenda. Are there any items anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? Trustee Church, I see your light on, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President and President. I'd like to pull 2.07, which is a charter school audit, 2.13, a bid award, 2.16, an RFP, and 2.18, BSN Sports. And previously, I discussed possibly 2.17, but I will not pull that. So, if staff is waiting on that, I am not pulling 2.17.
Okay. Thank you very much, trustee Church. I'll ask staff who are present for those items, 2.07, 2.13, 2.16, and 2.18. Trustee Church, please have your questions ready. We can go into those when it's appropriate. And any other consent agenda items to be pulled? Seeing none? Then, if it is a pleasure of the Board, before we take a motion, yeah, public comment. Thank you. Any public comment? Nothing else? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Duran, do you have a public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so no public comment on the consent agenda? Then, if it's a pleasure of the Board, looking for a motion to approve consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.06, 2.08 through 2.12, 2.14 and 2.15, and 2.17. Motion by trustee Rodriguez, is there a second? Seconded by Clerk Minetto. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries. Let the record show that is unanimous. And then, I'm going to turn it over. We're going to go to a consent agenda item 2.07 and ask staff to come forward for that item. I'll read it, and then I'll turn it over to you, trustee Church, with whatever questions you may have. Consent agenda item review and possible action to approve the annual charter school performance audit of Bailey Charter School and to make a finding whether the school is compliant with the terms and conditions of its charter agreement. Ms. Cooper? Thank you so much, trustee Church. Questions?
Good morning. Thank you very much. On the consent agenda, previously, there were a number of audits of charter schools. So, just for the sake of brevity, correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, we, not significantly, but we fund some of the expense of these charter schools. And as such, we have the responsibility to oversee the audit of those. Am I correct so far, more or less?
Trustee Church? At minimum, yes. All of our charter schools function and run solely off of their per pupil funding. We do keep 1.5% of that allocation for the services rendered, which are typically our supports, which include professional development, ongoing principal development, board oversight, assurances, and annual checks and balances, which is the purpose of today's presentation.
And as you mentioned, board oversight. So, that's a very important function of the Board. So, of the audits that were done, some of them were good. A few of them had some minor noncompliance, very minor. However, the Bailey one struck me as a red flag with many noncompliance. Can you just basically explain what this is about? What you recommend? Where we go from here?
Absolutely, trustee Church. And I would be amiss if I didn't be, if I wasn't candid. So, the internal audit components for Bailey Charter School, there were several areas that were noncompliant. I don't have a background in bookkeeping or accounting, but I do have here today Wacho County School District's internal auditor, Kirk Starkey, who conducted the audits for our charter school, and his assistant, Paul Casey. And also, in addition to that, the Director of Bailey Charter is here today. If you would like to speak with her or have any questions directly regarding her charter.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Trustee Church, I want to just kind of focus in a little bit. So, you just, you want, Mr. Starkey, you asked for just the kind of the opinion and the, his opinion on the audit findings? Is that, am I kind of focusing this for you?
Yeah, I have no expertise in auditing. I just realize all the red flags, noncompliance, for lack of a better word, here. So, I'm very, very concerned. I don't know the practice. We did have a briefing on this, I think, last meeting on charter schools. But what do we do? And where do we go from here?
Trustee Church, members of the Board, Kirk Starkey for the record. The main noncompliance items related to Bailey were as a result of not getting the annual audited financial statements that are usually done by an outside CPA firm. This year is a little different than the last couple. The last couple seemed to be more related to accounting system issues with Bailey. This year, after speaking with their accountant directly, it was more of a staffing issue from that CPA firm's point of view. So, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. But that's a lot of, because we don't have the report at the end of the day is why we have a lot of noncompliance items for our section. Without that report, we're unable to basically do a lot of what we typically do.
So, if I'm hearing, the audit that has to be done hasn't been done yet? It's been delayed?
That, as far, the last time I spoke to the outside accountant, it's been delayed. He is not, we don't, as of today, I don't have the issued report from the outside accounting firm.
Madam President, would it be appropriate to recommend this item be postponed until the Board can review the audit? Would that be an appropriate motion?
Well, I would, any motion certainly you can make. We don't review the audit, Mr. Starkey would. So, what we will review are the findings from that, just for clarity. And I don't know if they're, but I know that's kind of what you're getting to, right? I just wanted to be really clear on that from a motion standpoint. But if, before you do that, let's ask Ms. Cooper if there's some timing issues around that from a state standpoint? That might be while we're here beforehand, if you would.
Thank you, President Taylor. For the record, Stacy Cooper, Coordinator of Charter Oversight. Our reports, there was a question that was submitted in advance of this meeting from one of the trustees, so I want to make sure everyone received that communication, that our auditing reports do not have a negative impact on Wacho County School District's accountability system. Likewise, this charter performance monitoring or audit also does not carry any negative impact on Bailey Charter's state reporting and accountability. What this is for is for our internal eyes, that I do share with the state, and I do have a deadline. I have to get it to the state by the end of this month. So, I have to notify the State Department of Education that we have conducted our due diligence in monitoring and reviewing the performance of the charter schools so that they can have a full review of all the areas of compliance, marginal compliance, and noncompliance. It does carry potential bearing when the charter comes up for renewal because we can actually dig deep, ask questions about finances, structure, auditing, and assurances. But for this, it's more of a communication and a heads up to the state that shares that we are doing our due diligence to monitor and engage and to support our charter schools, not so much as a punitive at this point, trustee.
But again, we don't, we don't have the audit. What if the audit had material deficiencies, fraud? What would we do? What would, what are our options?
Kirk Starkey for the record. If we get an audit report along those ends, then we would, I would assume, our office would go in and we could start looking into what was going on. Part of it, you would need to, we'd meet with the outside accountant that issued the report and see what exactly, where they're at with issues like that. But just for the last couple of years, that has not been, the reports issued, the audit reports for Bailey have been unmodified opinions, which are, which mean basically clean opinions, good opinions. So, the last couple of years, we don't have that type of issue. Right now, we just don't have the report. That's.
Can you provide some guidance to me as a trustee charged with oversight, how I can possibly approve this today and send it to the state? And yet, know what's in it, without knowing what's in it?
If I may, Madam Cooper, this may add some clarity for you.
Thank you very much. So, trustee Church, I'd like for Ms. Cooper or Mr. Starkey to respond to, within your response, you mentioned a corrective action plan. And so, the charters receive a corrective action plan if they are evaluated in a noncompliant fashion. So, what exactly happens with that corrective action plan? Because that speaks to trustee Church's concern as far as when we have compliance and with the Board's oversight. So, there's a corrective action plan. There's expectations laid out. What happens with that corrective action plan, please?
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. Trustees, Dr. McNeil is very accurate in that assessment. After we go through this board meeting today, what I typically do is I reach out to the departments that have demonstrated or declared areas of noncompliance with our charter schools. And we enter into what we call a corrective action phase. In this case, specifically with Bailey Charter, Mr. Starkey and his internal audit team and I will be constructing a corrective action plan, which details very specific, time-embedded expectations for Bailey to prevent them from having untimely submissions in the future. So, that is, as Mr. Starkey has stated, he has been conducting monthly charter visits with Bailey. They have seen, from their localized point of view, their financials. But again, those financials go away to be audited by a third-party entity. And that is what we have not seen, is a validation from that third-party entity that confirms what Mr. Starkey and his team have reviewed. Mr. Starkey did say to me on several occasions and that his team and him felt comfortable with the continuation of Bailey because Bailey does exhibit fiscal responsibility on their part. They do engage and spend their monies wisely. And again, Ms. Anga Bratson is here. If you'd like to discuss with her or get to know her and hear a little bit more about, from their perspective, the concerns related to the fiscal reporting.
Okay, thank you very much. Is that of interest to trustee Smith?
Well, speaking with her isn't. What I wanted to say is I completely agree. Anytime we see noncompliance, it's our responsibility to ask questions with that. However, knowing that Bailey Charter School conducted their books, we've looked at them, although informally. And the issue here is related to a third-party that's having pandemic-related staffing issues. And quite frankly, that is something that I think our own district can relate to. That's not to minimize the importance of that third-party review. That's an important part of this process. But knowing that this is just sending along the information to the state, we still have a point in the future where if there was an issue, we could create corrective action or discuss their charter. I have a really hard time holding that against them at this point in the process.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Trustee Church?
So, I'm looking for a lifesaver here. Help me out. How can I make a motion to approve the annual charter school performance audit of Bailey Charter School when there is no audit?
If I may, I'm sorry, no, go ahead. Because what I was thinking is, let me just ask a question. This is not an attempt to answer your question, trustee Church, but this might add a little clarity. Because in my mind, I was thinking, what we would say in terms, from a corrective action standpoint, is one of the corrections, corrective actions would be to get that report. Am I, am I reading that? Am I getting that correct?
That is correct, trustee, or President Taylor.
I'm fully trusting, yes, I'll do it.
Also, just in hindsight and some of our historical practices, we have been in this situation before with other charters. So, what has typically happened is we have approved our communication to the state to go forward with a corrective action flag. And then, that charter school comes back in front of us here at Wacho County School District to discuss or share their progress towards their completion of that corrective action and their state of school business. That is a very viable situation that we have done in the past.
So, that might be, if I may, that might be an answer to your question then, trustee Church.
Not 100%. There was no audit, right? So, we can't, the motion as written wouldn't be legally accurate. I mean, help me out. I'm just looking for a lifeline.
So, Ms. Cooper, correct me if I'm wrong. The document that is attached is actually the performance audit. One component of that performance audit is the fiscal part, correct?
Correct.
There are other parts of that compliance audit, including human resources, academic, correct?
HR, facilities. Yeah, there's a lot of different departments. We're just one section of this entire report. So, as a whole, you're looking at Bailey, the report as a whole, not just our, our section, when you're deciding whether to approve or not.
So, audit in this case, and if I may, isn't like most of us think of, and I think this might be where you're kind of tied up. Most of us think of audit as that's the financial audit that comes from our auditor. Well, in fact, where in fact, this case, the audit is the entire audit and the financial piece, the entire audit of the school performance. And the financial piece is one piece of the entire audit. So, in answer to your question, how could you make a motion to improve the audit? It's not the financial piece. It's the entire report. It could almost say, make a motion to improve the report. And a part of the report is a corrective action because that audit was not included.
And if I may add on top of that, President Taylor and members of the Board, there's been much discussion at the state level with Rebecca Fiden, the state charter authority, other school districts that are authorizers of charter schools, on renaming these reports as performance monitoring tools because they aren't essentially an audit. We're not digging in and checking and balancing and dinging them, but we are communicating to the state to give them a perspective through a lens on how these autonomous charter schools are doing across the state of Nevada. And our report or our monitoring, our eyes, really just give a heads up to potential patterns that could bear influence on charter renewals and other issues as well. So, I agree, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. I saw trustee Mayberry, and then we'll go back to you, trustee Church.
Thank you, President Taylor. I was the trustee that asked the question. So, I'm satisfied with the answer that I received. I'm happy to make a motion if trustee wants.
Let's see what trustee Church is on this?
I was just going to make a motion, but you go ahead. Okay. Move to approve the annual charter school performance audit at Bailey Charter School and make a finding whether, make a finding that the school is compliant with the terms and conditions of its charter agreement.
Thank you, trustee Mayberry. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there are two seconds. We'll take Vice President Nicolet. And then, just as a reminder to the Board, a part of that report is a corrective action, which should complete that loop, if you will. So, it's not that that's being ignored. That is a part of this. That doesn't make them out of compliance. It means they're, they have some corrective action to make, just as a.
Could I ask trustee Mayberry for a friendly?
Sure.
That would be to change the word audit to monitoring and then add, with the understanding that noncompliant issues will be brought back to staff.
Okay, one thing I might say, since the state calls in the audit, I don't think we can change the name because that's what it's called. And that, but to ask for them to come back could be something that, because that is typically, that's happened since I've been on the Board. That, maybe that piece of your friendly might still be good.
And to be clear, it doesn't have to come back to us. It comes back to staff. And if they're happy with it, then we're done.
Okay, is that, and looking on the Board?
Yeah, I, trustee Church, I don't have a problem with that.
Oh, quarterly, oh, quarterly, yeah. Yeah, it comes, that happens anyway.
It happens anyways?
That's what I'm being told.
Okay.
That's, is that part of the terms and conditions? Is that they report back quarterly?
In all candid honesty, trustees, that was my recommendation, that the quarterly monitoring continue in collaboration with internal audit here in Wacho County School District and following through with our corrective action. That's why that language in the motion says as it is.
Okay. That's part.
I don't see that in the motion.
So, for clarification, the corrective action plan in this particular audit scenario is in the agreement? Okay.
That is correct. Once the Board has completed their action this evening, Mr. Starkey and his team and I get together to construct that corrective action. We deliver it to Bailey Charter. They have an opportunity to provide some feedback because it is a very collaborative engagement. And then, we agree upon how often, at minimal, quarterly, to meet with the school to ensure that the checks and balances are being addressed.
I'm confused, but if we can just read the motion back?
I was just going to ask what's, the motion is as it's stated on 2.07? And so, what we are dealing with is your request for a friendly?
Well, I'm confused because.
Your mic's off, sir.
I'm confused. Is, is the feeling that the motion's adequate? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, oh, it's making me put on my glasses. Perfect.
So, we're good? No, we're good? Okay. All right, okay, okay. Let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Let the record show it is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, JJ, thank you for putting that on the screen for clarity. It includes those areas of concern. All right, let's go on to agenda item 2.13. Oh, thank you. I meant to ask the principal to come forward. I'm sorry. We're the principal of Bailey. Thank you for your work. I see, oh, I see a lot of charter school principals here. All right, well, thank, well, thank you. And then, we look forward to coming back. Thank you. All right. Educating kids. Agenda item 2.13, it's the second one you pulled, trustee Church. I'll ask for your questions on that as staff comes forward. This is a worth of bid number 56-B-09-22-VP, Information Technology Networking Equipment to DynTech Services, Inc., in the estimated amount of $6,305,885.17. This begins April 1st, 2020, and ends on September 30th, 2023. I mean, 2020, oh, this begins April 1st, 2022. Sorry, and ends on September 30th, 2023. I'm not sure if I'm going to Dr. Turner or Ms. Pearson. So, it's, I'll turn it over to both of you.
We're open for questions.
Yes, sir, that's right.
Thank you very much. It's six, over $6 million. So, therefore, for me, just my practice is to, that the public and the Board really needs to know. That's a lot of money for our, for our budget that we just discussed earlier today. Specifically in here, if you can just tell me the who, what, why, when, what this, what this does. But also, what really caught my eye was that it divides it between capital projects and general fund. So, that really caught my eye that, I'd like an explanation.
Certainly, trustee Church. Chris Turner, Chief Information Officer. Speaking to the details of the total cost, the $6.3 million this year is in alignment with the last several years where this has been on consent agenda, ranging in cost from $3.5 to $6.5 million, going back to 2018. This covers Wi-Fi access points, network switches, cabling, UPS's uninterruptible power supplies, as well as telephones. We're doing, this year, we're refreshing the network infrastructure in 18 schools and sites, including two brand-new schools, Rio Wrangler and Debbie Smith. And what else? Some of these schools have not been refreshed since, many of them were refreshed eight years ago, some 10 years ago. And one that we're refreshing goes back to 2008, the last time they saw an update.
Okay.
And so, yeah, very informative because, again, this $6 million. I wasn't here in 2018, but $6 million's not going to pass my muster for consent. You mentioned the Rio Wrangler. So, that even includes the yet-to-be-constructed? I did go by. They broke ground, more or less. Rio Wrangler, part of this fund? So, that would explain the capital projects?
That's correct. This, much of this comes from capital projects. There are two items that are not eligible to be capital funded, and that's why they're coming out of the general fund. It is the maintenance license, as well as the content filter license.
And my final comment, and a comment, kudos to whoever caught that, that we didn't slip in something under capital projects that shouldn't be. So, I don't know if it's somebody here or Mr. Mathers,[1701.11] somebody here or Mr. Mathers, but that's, I respect that. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on this one, JJ? None? Okay, thank you. If none, I'm looking for a motion, if that's the pleasure of the board. Seeing no further questions? Moved by trustee Rodriguez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Minneto. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries. Let the record show it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Ms. Sullivan, thank you. No, you're still here. It's okay. All right. All right, you're still here. All right, agenda item 2.16. Once again, trustee Church, I ask you to have your comp, your questions available as staff positions themselves. A worth of request for proposal, RFP number 38P-09-22-A-S, electronic individualized education program, IEP, and Medicaid reimbursement software. This is to Public Consulting Group for a term of approximately five years and four months, beginning tomorrow and ending June 30th in 2027, the estimated amount of $2,442,406.33. This is actually to get us some money back, so. Questions, sir?
Great. And that's why, again, I think the public just needs to know, and the board needs to know. So we better approve it if it starts tomorrow, but if you can just who, what, when, why?
Thank you, Jennifer Van Tress, area superintendent, for the record. So as approved by the board, our work with PCG will start tomorrow, or start this week, where we will start initiating meetings with them to set up our logistics and our planning guidelines in order to actually start having staff work or actually start using this program on July 1st, 2022. So while it says it's starting tomorrow, we actually don't, we, you have to, we have to build the system, and so it gives us some time to build and, and train our staff in order to be able to start using it in July.
What is it exactly? What are we getting?
So are, we use an electronic or a software system for all of our IEPs, which is our individual educational programs plans for students with special education services. And so basically, it's a software system in order to create our IEPs, and it has a checks and balances to make sure we're doing it correctly, so that families are informed appropriately, teams are informed appropriately, and we meet federal and state guidelines as far as requirements, state reporting processes, Medicaid reimbursement, all of that.
It went out for bid, and we had how many bids? And then tell me, did we do the Medicare reimbursement before? But, so now, basically, this gets us money. Can you just kind of wrap that up?
Andrea Sullivan, Director of Procurement and Contract, for the record. We did do a formal sealed RFP process for this. We notified many, many companies that it was going out. We had two respondents, the incumbent, Excelify, and PCG, who we're recommending to. So we have always, at least since I've been here, had a company in place that did the Medicaid reimbursement piece for us as well. When I first arrived here, it was actually PCG was awarded through an RFP that my office handled. Many years later, Excelify was awarded a contract, and now we've gone back and done another thorough RFP, and we're recommending award to PCG this time. We do anticipate that our Medicaid reimbursements will increase. That's the plan. And so we do expect higher than what we've been seeing lately as for the Medicaid reimbursement piece. And we had maybe 17 or 18 committee members, so it was very much represented by all the people who will be using the system. All the types of positions that will be utilizing and logging in the system were represented.
I'm happy.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Make me read this one. Where's the motion?
You good? You want someone to just...
I make a motion to approve the RFP 38P-09-22, as stated?
AS.
Second?
At the AS. Friendly amendment at AS?
AS.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Trustee Mayberry. I forgot to ask, do we have any public comment on this? Okay, no, we don't. Okay, great. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, none. The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Let the record show it is unanimous, and I think you're staying with us, ma'am.
One more time.
All right, one more time. Okay, this is agenda item 2.18. I see staff is moving into position. Consideration to allow BSN Sports LLC into the pool of approved vendors for a comprehensive district-wide middle school and high school athletic uniforms and related apparel. Request for proposal, RFP 21-001 through August 8th, 2023, due to extenuating circumstances related to supply chain issues and other issues. Trustee Church?
Thank you. I'll try to be very brief. As the record reflects, the board previously declined the appeal from BSN to be part of this contract. We now have supply chain issues, which I think everybody knows about. So my only concern is that this is not that we are changing our mind on the previous denial. It's because it's essentially a new page because of the supply chain issues, and I want to make sure we're not gonna have some lawsuit or appeal from the other vendors who said, you know, that we're violating something.
Thank you, trustee Church. Andrea Sullivan, Director of Procurement and Contracts, for the record. This is a unique situation. We realize that. So it's, it's twofold. We do have major supply chain issues and major labor shortage issues that are contributing to the problem, but we also have a, an awarded team in the pool was purchased by BSN. And so we're really assigning the contracts from Team Sports, Inc. over to BSN. And this happens very regularly. It's happening all the time right now, where we have engineering firms buying other engineering firms, architect firms buying other architect firms, and by way of assignment of the contracts, one of the reasons they do it is to purchase their contracts, and this, so it's revenue already, you know, immediately to them. And so because if we, if we didn't allow BSN, we would reduce our pool to two. And we do not believe the existing pool has the capacity to serve the entire district right now. So we do have the choice whether to allow the assignment of contract or not, and we are recommending to allow it, because at this point, with the supply chain issues and the labor issues, that's starting to pose more risk than the, than the financial stability issues. And we are saying that at renewal time, we will revisit BSN's financials and take a look at them again and see how, see if things have improved for them.
So two questions. How long is this contract through, and have the other two vendors objected?
So I have not spoken to Branded Screen Printing about this personally. I have spoken to East Bay about it. They've been in my office a few times, and I told them that one of the very viable options was to allow BSN in through contract assignment. They did not push back at all, because they know that they are also struggling, and they want us to be successful, because if they can't supply us, then we might not use them again, right? So they were not objecting to allowing other people in, but I did notify them some weeks ago that this was a very viable option that we would be asking for the assignment of contract.
The contract is through what period?
It's, it's right here. It's August 20, August 8th, of 2023. So it was originally
awarded as a two-year contract. We're a little over six months into that contract right now.
Okay, and I'm, I'm happy, except for the record, it's been published, you know, per open meeting law, et cetera, and I don't believe any of those vendors are here to object. So I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? Any public comment on this one, JJ? Seeing none? Okay, there a motion on the floor, pleasure of the board, to approve agenda item 2.18? Moved by trustee Rodriguez, seconded by trustee Smith. Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion carries. As the record show, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, on to agenda item 3.01. This is our standing item of presentation and discussion to provide updates regarding the superintendent search for the Washoe County School District by the Bryant Group. And we see our usual suspects, I say affectionately, in front of us. We'll turn it over, over to you. Dr. Bryant?
Thank you. Pleased to be here. Nora is gonna kick things off, and as usual, we're gonna try to be pretty brief, but please stop us at any point with questions.
Yeah, he's right. This is different. Thank you. This is Nora Behrens of the Bryant Group, for the record. And I was just gonna give you a little update of where we're at, not be too worried about the whole thing, but of course, questions are welcome. So we are wrapping up the data collection portion of the program. We have, just sort of update-wise, we've received 488 surveys from the community, in English and in Spanish, total. We have done and conducted 12 focus groups for a variety of different stakeholder groups and gotten data that way. And Bill has done, what, about 22 interviews?
Yeah.
Give or take? So those are all the different types of data we've collected and the amounts of data that we've collected to, when we'll start analyzing it. That's the next step, to create the refined criteria. So that's sort of wrapping up now and going into the analysis phase. Another item I know you're interested in is recruiting. So we've extended the deadline from the 20th to the 27th, just to give folks a little bit more time. Full applications in hand right now is 18. Okay?
I'm sorry, Ms. Behrens, those are full applications?
Full applications.
All right.
18.
Take that check off my list. That was gonna be a question.
I know, I knew you would. Also, during the process, we did receive partial applications where folks would just send us a resume, and we'd follow up and say, hey, how about the rest of it? We did get 16 of those. And we did follow up and offer phone calls and do our best to try to encourage full applications. It's not the simplest application. We do expect a fair amount of material, so just shooting us a resume isn't going to do it on that one. But we did try to follow up, offer question answering support, anything. Anybody had questions?
I think we have a question right where you are, Ms. Behrens.
Yes, certainly.
Yes, thank you, President Taylor. Is that 16 partial applicants on top of the 18?
Yes. Yes, it is. Just so you get an idea of where folks are coming from, in the full applicant pool, the full applications in, the states represented currently are Nevada, Arizona, Connecticut, California, Illinois, Florida, Washington, and New Jersey. So folks from all around. It's a mix of traditional and non-traditional candidates.
You have numbers on those? That was gonna be my next question.
I don't have a number on that breakdown. Did you want to add something? No? Okay. And we've spoken with most qualified candidates. All candidates were offered an opportunity to speak with Dr. Bryant, answer any questions they might have, and give him the opportunity to tell them a little bit more about the district, about the opportunity. As we know, most qualified candidates are looking at several opportunities, so we're trying to build relationships the best we can with, with those that would be good candidates for our district. Yes, so in terms of active recruiting, we're pretty happy with that 18 full application number. We have sent out some additional emails. If more applicants come in during the next week, happy to look at them, not shutting anyone out, as we discussed previously. But we feel like the number is good enough to not continue posting, let postings expire on, on websites.
And it's not just the number. There's some real quality.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
I think that's the recruiting. Did anybody have questions on the recruiting portion of the program that I can't answer?
Yeah, I think we have several. I'll call to my colleagues first, trustee Smith, and then trustee Mayberry, and then trustee Rodriguez, and then I'll jump in.
Thanks. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the approach of extending it by a week. That way, candidates who may be interested, we've talked about what a full application process it is. Maybe they came to it a little bit late. Still gives them that opportunity to be included. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. We are trying to encourage people, if you want to put in a full application, haven't gotten around to all the pieces, call us, email us. Let's get in touch. Let's talk about it. So, yeah, we're not shutting the door on anyone that, that would like to be a part of the process.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, thank you. Diddle, trustee Smith's comment. And can you tell us just a little bit about what you're doing in terms of recruiting and headhunting again for the public?
What we've done already. I was wrapping up. Well, we had, in terms of recruiting, a lot, a lot of websites, a lot of different types of websites. So the, the sort of not education-specific ones, like Indeed and Career Builder. Some very education-specific ones, such as School Spring, Top School Jobs. Also looked for non-traditional candidates in places like military websites, the government, government websites, nonprofit websites. These are all job board type of websites. Also reached out to some folks personally, like the Nevada Superintendent's Association. They put it on their website, some folks like that, to try to get the word out.
Have you, are there any candidates that perhaps you've identified that would be a good fit that you've reached out to personally?
They're gonna talk about the emails, some emails to, Bill sent some emails to some passive candidates.
We, we held off somewhat on the headhunting. Well, we did, we did our research in terms of, we know the districts and so forth, and we started the process of sending personal contact to people in numerous districts that looked like they might be a fit. We were at the point at the end of last week of saying, let's start calling, but we received a number of full applications.
In the last 24, 48 hours, just before it closed?
And it wasn't worth it, because our, our goal right now is speed. I've talked to the candidates, and they've got, for example, Seattle, New Orleans are common ones that same people we're looking at, they're looking at. So the competition is really tight. So the, the goal right now is, since we have quality candidates, is to keep them in the fold and, and to move really quickly. And so we're doing a lot of things in parallel. When I talk with them, I am always promoting the district. One of the things, and I may not have mentioned this, but one of the things that I do is I spend time talking to them about our search process, and they are fascinated by it. They would like to go through the guided storytelling, because they'll learn something about themselves and, you know, what to do in the future. The other thing that we always offer, because our, our mission is to build leadership in education, is that we offer an hour to two hours of coaching for anybody who is not selected. So they get an idea of, now, we can't put ourselves in a legal position and say, well, you did this versus this other candidate, but we can certainly say, this would make you stronger if you worked on this, in terms of how you present yourself and what it means to be a leader. So that has gone over very well as well. So we're really trying to make the district look like a place people really want to be. And I think that, that lends itself to that.
And encouraging them to stick with the, stick with the process.
Yes, stay with us.
Stay with us.
Another thing, for example, we're always looking. Any rock will turn over and hand out a brochure. Last week, I was, I was, I was part of, I was zoomed in, but my partner, we did presentation to two superintendent panels in Nashville at the AASA National Conference, and my partner was handing out brochures, and they have, they have a room there that's just a job room, where, where the superintendents go and so forth. So there was, there was a stack of brochures there as well. So we keep it going.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Mayberry, were you, you good? That's it? Okay, trustee Rodriguez, I think you're next.
Just did the wing.
Oh, that was just did the wing? Okay, then, all right, okay. Then I'll go, and then I'll go to you, trustee Church. Just, I just have a couple more comments. Man, I'm, I'm excited about the, about having 18 in, I think full ones in, and then even having another week for any, anybody that might be kind of lagging in that, if you will. Can, is there, can you give us any kind of an estimate on traditional versus non-traditional? I'm just a little concerned about what that might look like.
People are listening in.
Okay.
You know, candidate-wise, and just want to keep a neutrality to things in terms of them not making assumptions, should I stay in, should I not?
Should I apply, should I not?
Let me just, you know, there's a good mix.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll go with that. We'll go with that. I don't like it, but we'll go with it. Yeah, I don't like it. But, okay, just a couple more questions, if I may, trustee Church. I know you're leaning in. Hang on, sir.
That's okay.
On the, on the survey now, I, we have, is the survey deadline, is it finished or?
It is finished.
I will say that the last few times we've done surveys, now, we've gotten like thousands of responses. So I'm a little concerned about the number in that, any, did you notice any barriers? I mean, the last couple times, we've gotten like 4,500, I think, the last. I'm just, I'm just a little concerned.
I don't know, maybe hopefully folks in, participated in focus groups and did that instead.
Okay. About how many people did you have in?
Oh, I don't, I don't have a number. We did 12 of them.
Yeah.
But I don't have a number of the, of the participants.
Were they large, small?
They were mostly on the smaller side, but very, like five people. Yeah, pretty small.
We would often have a lot more sign up, but then not show up.
Yeah, that was definitely a thing. I mean, went out via Connect Ed twice, the survey, and it was on, you know, the Washoe County website as well.
Yeah, and then the media picked up some as well.
Yeah, press release, all that.
Yeah, I mean, and it's just, as you, as you know, I mean, it's important to all of us that the public have an opportunity to, to weigh in and engage in the process, because it's a, it's a real important hire, right?
Absolutely.
For us and for them.
The quality of the responses have been fine, so we didn't have any question from that perspective.
Okay, all right. Good. Thank you. Trustee Church?
Like everybody else, I'm chomping at the bit, but I, I understand, it's better if we don't know at this point what we don't know. So I've got that. And then, again, I as a, I thought the, I thought it closed today, or a couple days ago. So the week extension, I'm nervous, but I, there's, there's no right answer. So, yeah, a one-week extension sounds good. Do we need to vote on it as a board to approve that extension? I don't know. I don't think so, but I just wanted to bring the question up.
I don't get the impression that we do.
I don't.
Yeah, there you are.
I don't believe so, based upon your prior approval of their process.
Okay. Okay, I thought so as well, but it's not bad to check.
Yeah, without reviewing the prior, I just wanted to make sure if we had to dot an i. And then the only other final thing, I had a couple emails that said, somebody in your group is affiliated with the school district as an employee, contract employee. Can we just put that to bed?
Yeah, it's in bed. No.
It's amazing what folks, which folks around out there. Any other questions, comments from, anything else you need from us? I know, Mr. Bryant, Dr. Bryant, I know you have some reporting. You have, you have notes, so we want to, certainly want to hear from you too, sir.
I've gotta have my airtime compared to my companion.
Okay, well, come on, come on in.
No, just, just real short, in terms of what are, what are the next steps, so you know where we're going next.
Okay.
So we have all this data to crunch, hoping to have it all done by, by Monday, even the 400-plus surveys and so forth, so that we have the, the very tight selection criteria in terms of measurable roles, competence... measurable roles, competencies, leadership styles, and failure factors. And in working with our search advisory group, we tune some of that up, and we validate it, and then we can start, we want to be starting at the beginning of next week, the actual application screening against the criteria. So, we want to stay on time, even if we have other people coming in, we can incorporate them a little bit later, but we can't wait to get things going. So, we're going to get through those applications. Typically, given the number that we have, we would look to have eight to 10 move forward to the short interviews, and then have four to five of those move to the really long interview. Remember, short interviews, two hours, long interview is four hours. And at that point in time, we would be making recommendations, and it would come back to you at the board, be able to view those interviews and the scoring and the other things we've done. So, we are on track and moving ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry, remind me, the long interview is first, or the short interview is first?
Short interview is first.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Coley, I see you doing your head back here, thank you. I was taking notes, I missed that. I could have just asked you on the break, huh? Okay, thank you. Trustee Mayberry?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Bryan, just rookie question, I guess. So, 18, let's just assume it's 18. Is that, is that about right? Is it more, is it less? How would you, how would you rate that?
I'm pleased, given the current situation. If it weren't that we have twice as many superintendent openings now than we had like a year ago, I would have hoped for 20 to 25, but I think 18 is good, and we've got good enough quality. And, you know, at the end of the day, O-N-E, right?
Need the right one, need that, need that. Dr. Nicolet, and then trustee Rodriguez?
Thank you. O-N-E, I was thinking, oh, no, another acronym. So, the guided storytelling, is that a component in both of the interview sessions?
Short and long.
Short and long, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee Rodriguez?
Just to refresh my memory, so the interviews initially, they're being, is that being done by the superintendent and search group, or is that being done by members of our staff? Or?
The application screening is done by the search advisory group with training. This Thursday night, we go through a lot of training on that. But then there's validation, in which we're part of the validation of who has been selected and how we would view things, but the training is pretty rigorous. When we get to the interviews, because we're on a short timeframe, where we might, in another process, train search advisory group members to actually do or pair up to do the interviews, because then they would learn some of the guided storytelling, we don't have time. So, I'm doing all the interviewing, but they are all observers, and they will be trained in the scoring, so they'll have the refined criteria, but everybody stays part of the process throughout.
So, to kind of go a little bit further on that, because it's pretty important to me that our community is involved as much as possible, so do they weigh in a lot of input, even though you're facilitating the interview on our candidates?
Mm-hmm. They do. Just take a second. We do everything by Zoom, and we record it, so if there's anybody who missed it from the SAG, gets a chance to look at it, put in their scoring and so forth.
Okay.
But the behavioral science, and apologies if I've said this before, but the behavioral science says, you never put two faces, any more than two faces in front of somebody when you're interviewing, because the dynamic kind of suppresses the access to information for some people, things that would subconsciously come up otherwise. So, what we do is, everybody else is off-screen, except me in this case, and I bring them in for follow-up questions at certain points, and then they all come back on screen to do the scoring once it's all over.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Smith?
Thank you, that was the perfect segue. So, I've been contacted by some people that are on the search advisory group, will absolutely keep them discreet, but the words that they've used with me to describe this process is fascinating, engaging, an unusual amount of ownership and accountability, and just a general surprise that they actually get to be a part of this process in the way that you have done it. Now, we don't actually know what is happening, and I do not ask deep, detailed questions, so I'm talking about unsolicited feedback that is coming to me, that is overwhelmingly positive and pleasantly surprised that people in our community are really driving this train along with you.
Thank you.
I love that.
Okay, thank you for that, trustee Smith. Other questions, comments? Okay, I'll ask, is there anything you need of us?
Not at this point in time, thank you. The support we've been getting from staff has been wonderful, so we're good.
And we can look forward to the next step for us in terms of us, community communication, is we're going to be putting up an update on our update section with help of communications, and also put a Q and A section on the Washoe County Superintendent's Search page, because people do have sort of, certain questions keep coming up. So, we'd like to just put that information out there to try to, try to answer as many community questions as we can, you know, in advance.
Okay, good. I'll ask this, what was the almost around, excuse me, because having 18 is a pretty good number under the circum, all the circumstances we're in, right? What was the rationale, or what was your thinking, rationale sounds bad? What was your thinking around an extended week?
We did have one or two candidates saying, could you give us a little extra time?
Okay.
And we did some late recruiting. We said we ought to, we ought to send something out to this, and pushed it out at that point.
Yeah, and I think that was probably before a big chunk came in, and then we were like, wow, okay, fine.
Okay, then a big chunk came in, like, dang.
Yeah. Sorry, it's all right, we're just not going to hold this up, because we're getting, we're moving forward.
Yeah, no, and I'm hearing you, we're on time, and you're, and then you've stepped in, Dr. Bryan, to take on some of that, to continue, people stay involved, just to make sure it continues on, so thank you for that. Just thank you. Okay, looks like we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for driving down. I know, and that's no, I know. Thank you. Certainly safe travels home. Okay, and thank you to the staff, who's, who's been helping. Yes, thank you, thank you to the staff. All righty, we'll continue on with our presentation, and this is agenda item 3.02, presentation and discussion, and presentation, discussion, and possible action, to approve the draft contract template for the position of superintendent of schools. This is for W C S D, and then our chief H R officer is in front of us, Ms. Ellison.
Good afternoon.
And I don't know if you missed it, but we were saying, thank you to staff, they talked about how helpful the staff was in the search process, so we were thanking you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, you're welcome, thank you. So, this item is to review the contract template that was assembled prior to the appointment of Dr. McNeil to the superintendent position. And just for a little history, the reason that we went with having a template in place prior to negotiations really is a couple of layers. First, we want to make sure that things that are most often reflected in employment contracts are consistently reflected in the contract with the superintendent, so we're not starting from scratch every time and coming up with all of the terms with every individual candidate. It also creates a framework and sets some expectations for the candidates that are in this process with the Brian group, right? So, once we finalize this document, I can provide it to them, and then they can help to answer any questions that may exist from those who are interested in the position. And then, of course, in an effort to avoid protracted negotiations, so again, if a superintendent candidate comes in and we're starting from scratch, that could take much longer than trying to fill in the details for some of the key points that you've already made decisions about. So, with that in mind, this, the template was developed in consultation with McDonnell Corona Wilson, again, a few years ago, with input from General Counsel, Office of General Counsel, Business, and Human Resources. And then we did have an opportunity to share it with Mr. Hall for his review as well. He may have comments during the discussion today. Most are minor changes, but I think that, based on previous experience, it's most helpful if you have the document in front of you, and we'll just kind of review as we go, and I can explain the logic. Like I said, minor, mostly minor editorial changes, or just language for clarity, but please do stop me along the way if you have any questions. The first changes that you'll notice are many spaces where there's highlighted information. Those are the blanks where we would plug in the individual's name. And then the first change that you see tracked in the document is under recitals in Section A, and we added a notation that the individual is presently qualified to serve as superintendent of schools. Of course, if you choose an alternate candidate, a non-traditional candidate, this was a good flag for me and my team to remember to work with all of you, to provide any clarity that we might need to around that. So, if the person is not currently a licensed administrator, you all will work to determine the timeline and path for that person to get there.
Does everyone remember that that means they have a certain, okay, period of time to get that license or according to state law? Okay.
All right.
Is now a good time to comment on that, or should we?
On that right here, sure.
Yeah, I, I hope we can word that so that we don't scare away the other potentially good applicants.
Well, they won't see this, this, this doesn't go out to applicants.
Well, it's public record.
Well, sure, but they should hopefully not just look at this, but they should hopefully listen to the conversation, and they'll be able to tell from the Brian group that, that they've reached out to non-traditional candidates, so we recognize that this, that this is, that they won't reach this criteria, but state law allows for an avenue in that. That's where the conversation's coming.
I guess just, when we get down to the motion, maybe we can discuss the word flexible or draft or something, so that hopefully people would know that.
I do think it might make sense to move through motions as we go through the document too, if there are any.
So, that we don't do them all at the end?
Just so we don't forget the conversation.
No, I think you're right, and it's a long document.
And what I might suggest, trustee Church, to address your concern, is that we could also put the word presently in brackets with a highlight, so that it indicates that it's sort of a fill-in spot, like the name, and then depending on who the candidate is, you can always change out that language, depending on their circumstances.
And I'm having a hard time finding it, which section was this again?
It's on the first page?
First page, under recitals.
Number one, number A, letter A.
Yeah, I'm not very good at making a suggestion on this, but maybe something.
No, no, she made a suggestion. Will you repeat it? Because he couldn't find where you were.
I see.
You see that? Okay, would you like her to repeat her suggestion?
No.
No, you got it?
I'm just trying to digest.
Okay.
I think one of the other things that we could do, if it helps to provide clarity, we could, we could put is presently in brackets with a highlight as well, and say is slash is not presently, so that it indicates there's a choice for that field there.
That might be an easy way to do it, and that way, they know it's, it could be one way or the other, and then if it's is not, additional language would, would be required, you know, could we, we would want to put in what state law says, or whatever timeline we as a board might want to give him or her, but that makes it, just in case they don't listen to anything, and all they get is this document, because they download it from board docs, at least that keeps that, because I think that's what your concern is, right?
Love it, yeah, so it basically, so moved, that it would be added to say is or is not, or presently, or how would we word that?
I think, I think Ms. Ellison's recommendation was is slash is not.
Presently.
Presently.
So moved?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor? Is, should we take public comment on the contract as a whole? How should we do public comment on this?
Oh, sorry, I messed that up.
I think I would do it as you go, each one, that way we don't have to revisit.
We can take each, public comment on each one of them?
Actually doing a motion, I think, I think it would be technical, we probably.
Okay. All right, is there public comment on is or is not? There is not, okay. All right, so thank you, all right? He's the counsel, that's, we're going to do what he says. We're going to do what you say. All right, so then, okay, we have a sec, we have a motion on the floor, trustee Church, seconded by trustee Smith, we've done public comment. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries. All right, let's keep moving on, Ms. Ellison.
All right, one page down.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, trustee Rodriguez?
Just for the interest of saving time, could we maybe as trustees or as the board, like, kind of make notes and then do all this at the very end, and, or we have to do public comment every single one?
Well, one of the things about, if it's a 14-page document.
Exactly.
And if we have a, right, no, I'm with you. Hey, you heard my question, I said everyone, but if we make, if we have a discussion about something and don't resolve it on page two, and then we get down to page 14 and have to go back and make, I think for clarity's sake, we, we.
And what we just did, we moved that.
Yeah, for clarity's good.
I do think, though, it's important to note that there are some changes in here that might need a blanket motion at the end, right? So, we're not going to, we're not going to have a motion for the name in the first paragraph, and then the name again, right?
Right.
So, anything that warrants discussion, probably act upon, just so we don't lose that thinking, but then, right, we do need a motion.
We absolutely have to do an overall motion. People thinking of saving time, so we don't, but we don't have to discuss every one of these highlighted areas, so certainly know that. I don't think we're going to have a discussion about, should their name be in here? Should we put their name? Should it be name or names? Should we put, but I hear you, I hear you. All right, no, we're not having that conversation, Dr. Nicolet. Yes, Ms. Ellison?
I think as we move on to, you'll see most of them are minor editorial change.
Yeah, but that was a good change, though, I have to, that was a good change, trustee Church.
Then you'll see, again, some placeholders, ineffective date, and terms, term of agreement as well, under compensation, you all approved a compensation amount previously, but I did want to mention that there may be additional changes that come to the contract as a part of the negotiation process. So, you talked at length about the potential for performance bonuses, and so, once you identify a candidate, you may want to, as a part of that, of interacting with that candidate, negotiate different terms for performance bonus. So, these are, these are recommended, this is recommended language at this point.
Okay, we're going to go there, I'm going to jump, just interrupt you, because I see trustee Mayberry?
I apologize, Ms. Ellison. So, going back to number three, effective date, I thought we agreed that it would be a three-year agreement, or is that still, is that open, is that something that's open for negotiation?
So, on the effective date, I think the date will change, dependent on whether or not we're able to have overlap with the current superintendent, and then the.
And I'm sorry, I meant four, not three, I apologize.
Oh, yeah.
The term.
No problem. I believe that you all discussed a three-year term. It is in statute that you can't exceed four years for the initial term, but again, once you identify the selected candidate, you all can negotiate that.
Okay, and then you, I think, I did have a note here about performance bonus, and I think this is sort of where I need to kind of crystallize this template, is if we were to do a performance bonus, clearly I would want some metrics there, you know?
Absolutely.
Some, maybe some separate document, so that's not there, but again, that would come down the road, right? That would be something we would discuss later.
Yeah, and I think when we get to that, that language, if it's not here in 5B, it's a little bit later in the document, where it talks about kind of the board's discretion to award based on identified performance metrics, and so usually what's happened is the contract exists, and then we go through the strategic planning process and identify metrics as a part of the strategic plan that constitute, if you will, kind of the report card for the superintendent. Yeah. All right, under Section 5, there's one change, you'll see a reference to 12-month licensed administrators, it's underlined and in red, and I added that just for clarity, and this process is consistent with the distinction in the leadership team handbook, and so typically the, you know, compensation or benefits changes that are negotiated for our licensed administrators, that's what the leadership team follows, and the superintendent would follow as well.
And so, where are you reading?
Section 5A.
5A, okay, gotcha.
About four sentences.
Yep, license, I got it, thank you.
All right.
Comment?
Oh, yeah, please, trustee church.
That seems to be in conflict, what we just voted on, because it uses the word other implying that the superintendent would be a licensed administrator. So I think we either need to take out, just take it out, or take out the word other.
Well, I think this is not intending to say that the person is necessarily licensed, but that we follow the terms, if you will, of the licensed administrator agreement.
Do my fellow trustees read it that way?
Yes. Okay.
Okay. All right, perfect. So 5B is one of the more substantial changes that I'm recommending. And the reason for this is, you'll see a little bit later on in this section that talks about compensation tied to evaluation, that the evaluation happens in December of each year. And the reason for that is the data from the previous school year, for example, graduation rates, right, the kind of the key metric, is usually not available until the October-ish timeframe. And so out of fairness to the employee, right, we schedule it no later than December so that there's a complete data picture for the metrics that have been identified tied to that performance evaluation.
And if I may add in that, there are times, as we know, when if there is an election season, which we know happens every two years, there can be a, a shift if you wait until January. So you have new people in who would have to evaluate the superintendent who's never worked with the superintendent. So that's why it's no later than December.
Excellent point. Thank you. So the change that I've made here is to reflect the fact that this contract runs standard July through June. But having a December performance evaluation means that essentially a person with a three-year contract would only be eligible for two performance reviews, right? Because they would reach the end of their contract in June. I had to draw myself a picture of this just so I could be clear. They would reach the end of their contract in June of 2025. And so unless they were extended, they would not be evaluated for the 24-25 school year.
Can I interrupt real quick? I, I think you said, or maybe I heard wrong, that the contract starts July. We've expressed a desire to hire them sooner, if we can.
Correct. But it would end no later than June, right? So it might start in this first year, a few months early, but the typical contract year is July through June. So if we think about a July through June model and a three-year contract, the way the evaluation happens in December and, and the bonus that's tied to that, the, the candidate would only have an opportunity for two evaluations. So the change that I'm proposing here would allow the board, it allows the board for discretionary payment of a bonus at the end of the contract in the case of resignation, retirement, disability, or death. So I just want you to kind of keep a little placeholder here so you know what this language says. And then when we get a little bit later on to performance evaluation, this paragraph's eight A D E, that's where it describes what happens when someone is, when the contracts, contract ends because of resignation, retirement, disability, or death. So this change right here is intended to give you the opportunity to provide a discretionary bonus at the end of the contract term, even if it's not tied to an evaluation that would happen six months later. Does that make sense? Like I said, it's okay if it doesn't. I had to draw myself a picture just to make sure I understood.
Okay, there, wait, trustee Rodriguez?
Quick question, sorry. If, if we go back, we're still on page two, good. On the performance bonus on part B, is the maximum 10% of superintendent's salary, is that set by statute or is that just kind of common, common practice?
Actually, I'm glad that you caught that because I intended that to be one of the places that you all would fill in. So it would just say percent, not 10%.
It isn't statutory, if that's your question. It is not statutory.
We did add some additional language to that section where I crossed out at the conclusion of each WCSD fiscal year during the term. Because when it came down to what we would pay in a, in a bonus situation, Mark and I were both confused about which fiscal year we were referring to in that section. So we figured it would be a lot easier to just say, if you all award a bonus, it will be paid at the pay rate that's ineffective at the time of that award.
That makes sense.
All right. In section.
Trustee church, just jumping.
So I'm comfortable with 10%. I think that, that's a cap, doesn't mean we have to do the whole thing, but roughly 30,000. Do we need to say annual though? You didn't, you, you explained that kind of, but do we need to say the word annual?
Where would you put annual?
Right after 10%. 10% annually. In other words, we can't give 10% every six months.
Maybe the superintendent's annual salary is probably more, more, more that might fit. Is that, is that your intention, trustee church?
It refers to the word salary, which is defined above as annually.
Oh, okay. All right, makes it clear. All right.
Okay. In section C, it talks about the fringe benefits that the superintendent would be eligible for. And the, the previous language included that his or her spouse and eligible enrolled dependents would be covered and the district would cover that cost. That is actually not a fringe benefit that is available to other WCSD employees. And as such, I struck it here.
Yep.
Okay. And then I made just some editorial changes in the rest of the language so that it reads correctly with that removal. So accidental death and dismemberment benefit, that actually should have been dismemberment all along. And then the fringe benefits are subject to any and all changes which are made to the fringe benefits of WCSD's full-time 12-month licensed administrators. So again, just a little bit of tweaking to make the language clear.
Okay. Trustee church?
Again, thank you. Does this, I've been, I've been, I've dealt with this kind of before. What if the individual doesn't want medical but might want extra money? And/or what if they want to negotiate their spouse's coverage? So how do we do that and not lock, lock ourselves out of it?
Yeah, this is just a template. So this is the place to start. And then again, as you all identify a candidate and negotiate the specifics of their contract, then you would work out those details. Certainly not locked into this document.
And I think.
Contract's not final till it's signed, right?
Right, that's true. And I think what, if we were having that conversation trustee church, because you don't know what people's situation, right? Then it would, I think we will be having the conversation, excuse me, for an example, oh, that, if the value of that is $25,000 and they really have the $25,000, we don't care, it's $25,000. I mean, I think at that time, we'd have that conversation if he or she, if that best fit them.
All right. Under section D, our friends in legal added some language to say, and to execute any authorization needed to effectuate the deduction. So really this section describes to our superintendent that you get your vacation and sick leave front-loaded, but if you use vacation time that you don't earn, then we need to do a deduction when you separate. And this sentence compels them to fill out the paperwork to allow that to happen.
Compels. That's an Anthony word right there. See? 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 See?
I just hope I'm interpreting your edits correctly. I think, I think I understood the, the changes. All right. Annual medical examination, again, just some wording changes here describing any significant health issues the superintendent has, which affects their ability to, to perform the job. And I think that just helps to reduce any potential liability for us as well. We need to have definitive information. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to section H, I did hear what I intended to do with the percentage in the other section. So I struck $500, which is the monthly amount received now, and replaced it with a, a fill-in spot. And then the rest of the changes that are reflected here are specific to the fact that reimbursements are treated differently than allowances from a tax perspective. And so my friends in business really wanted us to reflect what this actually is, which is an allowance and not a reimbursement. And so the, the paragraph reads much the same if you look at what was there and what's there now. But again, it, it reflects that change, that it is an allowance, not a reimbursement, but does clarify that the superintendent is not also able to claim reimbursement.
Trustee Mayberry?
Ms. Ellison, I apologize. We should go back to D, as in Delta, paid vacation, sick leave. Just the very last sentence there. If superintendent is absent from official duties, superintendent shall notify the board president or the board president's designated. Is there, is there a timeline for what that absent is? I mean, is it, is it a, an hour, a week, a month? Has that been defined in the past?
I might need your help, Dr. Taylor, refreshing my memory around the discussion. But I do believe that later in the contract, there is more language around what the official duties are. And so my interpretation would be that if it prevents the superintendent from performing their contractual obligations, then it would need to be, it would need to be reported.
That's what I thought. That was just a missing piece.
Right, yeah, no, just for clarification, like for an example, if Dr. McNeil, she's, I'm gonna be on vacation for two weeks or a week or whether, over Christmas, she was gone a little, she, she notifies the, the board president. And then, and then who, this is who's in charge while I'm gone, that, so that's, that's, see, that's, that's not necessarily, that's not the extended leave. Like if someone has a, has an issue in there, that is, that's mentioned later. This is regular leave or, oh, I'm, I'm sick today, which I don't think, I've ever had a superintendent say that, but you know, they certainly could.
All right. There aren't many changes until, again, we get to section, I lose track of the numbering here, 6F. And just adding some clarifying language that unless the individual is otherwise instructed by the board of trustees, they shall be in attendance at all regular, special, enclosed meetings of the board. And moving on to section eight.
Seven, regularly.
We were in seven. I don't have any more on seven.
The last paragraph in seven.
Oh, wait, yeah, you're right. Evaluation of performance. Sorry about that. So the parties shall meet, it previously said quarterly, and I changed it to regularly. And really that was just knowing that there's a lot of transition coming. There's a new superintendent, there's many trustees who are up for reelection, and there's the adoption of a new strategic plan. And so all of those things may change how the board and superintendent want to go about reporting on those results and when and all of that. So I really felt like this gives you a little bit more flexibility. Again, you can certainly change it if the candidate selected wants to negotiate something more concrete.
Remember, these are the, you know how we get those, those reports every, and there's on certain portions of the, of the strategic plan, that's what this is referring to.
All right. Onto section eight. Under section eight A, I added clarification that this would apply in the event of resignation or retirement of the superintendent.
As you may recall, we dealt with this a little bit earlier because she was, because Dr. McNeil is retiring, it, it took a, a separate board action for her to be able to, you know, get her accrued leave like other leadership team members did, but it wasn't included in here. So we had to make it do a separate, a separate board action for it, so.
All right. And then under section C, you'll see a reference to termination for cause. Of course, that would be an action taken by the board. And so you'll see the words by board added to section C and to section D in the heading.
Can I go back to A?
Trustee church, sure.
Thank you, ma'am. 45 days notice. What, what if he or she doesn't? I don't.
Four, A, I'm sorry, eight A?
Termination A must give 45 days notice. Is there a penalty if they don't?
I am not a lawyer, but I would venture a guess that if they didn't, they would be in breach of contract. And so then the circumstances surrounding their departure might impact how the rest of the contract language is interpreted.
Well said. Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Yeah, I would agree with that and add that that would then affect what remedies might be available to the board, for example, for breach. So it would affect that.
Thank you. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm almost wondering, this is just my perspective, 45 days just doesn't sound like enough. I'm almost wondering if, 45 days doesn't give us enough time to recruit. I'm almost wondering if 90 is, is a, is a safer number. Must give 90 days.
What do we ordinarily see? I mean, I think if it's retirement, it may be more planned, it may be time for more of a plan. Which, which, what's customary? I don't. Mr. Hall, you know?
It's difficult to say. I, I think, you know, resignation and retirement are generally a planned event, right? So I'm just speaking from a human resources perspective. Retirements, in my experience, have always come well in advance of the retirement actually happening, but resignations can happen under a lot of different circumstances. So.
Trustee Mayberry and trustee church, you both raised questions that go to an issue that I discussed with Ms. Ellison and Mr. Rombardo as well, about the effect of the 45 days and whether that's enough, what the purpose is. There, there's another issue which we were about to raise, which relates to these, which is there's a possible ambiguity in this contract as structured in that it says they are at-will employees, yet in other sections, it requires 45 days notice. And then there's another section where we're required to give 30 days. That could be seen as a, an ambiguity in the contract and could open this up to some problems. It's not a change that we had made because it's substantive, because if we're gonna say we want to preserve it as at-will, which is something I, I think is a wise thing to do, then we have to specify what happens if you don't put, give the 45 days or if we fail to give our 30 days. In that discussion, we may want to increase it to 40, from 45. 45, if someone says, I'm out of here and they're a superintendent, we've just seen how long this is to, to replace him, it, we may want more time than that. But at the same time, we have to then give consideration for the notice. So it might be that we increase how much of their sick time they get or something like that. So there's a possible ambiguity and remedies problem with the way this is structured that we can, we can remedy, but we need a little board direction as far as what, what you want as far as for us to, where to take it.
Should we have that conversation now or will we get to that part later on in the contract?
We're, we're kind of at that part right now. So the, the questions were perfectly timed for the issue that we were gonna, we needed to raise. So that, that's the legal ambiguity. And so it becomes what do you want to do? How long should the notice be and what are the ramifications you want specified in the contract?
So we really have three things that we want to write, want to, want to, yeah, flesh out if you will. I'm, I'm gonna give our student trustee priority over all of us.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a question, like talking about this. How did superintendent, Dr. McNeil become super interim superintendent or how was she chosen after the last superintendent left?
Well, it was, there was, excuse me, first of all, she became interim, right? Cause Ellen, we were both here, right? So correct me if I get off track. She became interim because there was a, you know, it takes a, takes a while to do a search, right? And it came up very quickly. Right, she was a deputy. And what's in, what's in, thank you, what's in board policy? Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I was gonna say it's on, but right. It's in board policy that if, if the, if the superintendent leaves, the deputy superintendent becomes interim. That's the board policy. If we, if we want to change that, we certainly can, but that's in board policy. That's because there was some confusion, there was, you know, stuff comes up because of drama without, anyway, which predated me, but nonetheless. And so she became the deputy, and then you do the search, and we're in the middle of the search. We had gotten down to, to our, we have 10 finalists, I think, something like that. And, and then COVID hit. And so we're in the middle of dealing with COVID, everybody went home for spring break, never came back. You know, I mean, the whole thing. And, and the interim contract was for a year. And it's like, you know what, under these circles, we can interview, you can't bring anybody in, nobody can get on the plane, nobody could, I mean, the whole thing. And the board's like, look, we're in the middle of some stuff and this is not a great time to change our leadership or yada, yada. So the board made the decision to, to end the search and hire Dr. McNeil. And so that's how that, that's how that happened.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee church?
Yeah, that was, that was an excellent question. And just a quick comment on the 45 days. Well, as we see also commonly, they give notice of whatever days, but then they burn up their sick lives. So they're essentially gone, but.
That can happen.
They're leaving, but they're burning up sick leave, vacation, et cetera, et cetera. And so we're carrying them on the books, but they're not gonna come back.
Depends on the circumstances, right?
Yeah, so we need to factor that in any decision.
Depends on the, I mean, he's absolutely right in depending upon the circumstances because like in this case, Dr. McNeil is retired, and so she, her intention is to because like in this case, Dr. McNeil is retired, and so she, her intention is to be here until we hire a new superintendent, yada, yada. So, that may not occur. It depends upon the circumstances of the search. I think one of the things Mr. Hall shared that I was seeing is really important for us to think about. If it's forty-five days, ninety days, whatever, it goes both ways. Okay, so then that means if we're asking, let's just make this up, if we're asking whatever superintendent is leaving, because they're deciding to leave, for whatever reason it may be, give us ninety days' notice, for an example. It would, it would suffice to say, I would imagine, that if we're going to terminate their contract, then we need to give them ninety day notice. Is that, does that cover it?
No.
No, that isn't that way.
They don't have to be reciprocal.
Okay.
We could preserve our thirty day notice and extend theirs to ninety. We just have to have consideration for their thirty, or excuse me, their ninety. We're giving consideration for the thirty by entering the contract as a whole. So, those two do not have to be parallel.
Okay. Is that customary?
Very commonly, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Hall, would you mind kind of recapping the key decision points that we need to make with respect to this issue?
He said, he said, what we have to decide, what we want to do, we have to decide how long, right? And then what happens if the rules are broken? He didn't say it like that, but basically.
Okay.
And those largely tie together, the last two. So, you have to decide how long of a notice you want from the superintendent, and we have to decide what the consideration we're providing for that notice period is.
Meaning?
Meaning, are we going to let them cash out a hundred percent of sick time versus twenty-five percent? Are you going to put a dollar figure to it?
Just move your mic a little bit closer. That way, I want to make sure.
So, you have to decide what the consideration linked to that notice would be in order to preserve the at-will status.
And you also mentioned number three is, if they don't give us, as Trustee Church asked, what if we don't get forty-five days? Or what if there's a breach with this?
That's going to cause a breach, and they won't get the amount we provide for that. And that's why you want to tie it to something that would incentivize. So, those two are related to each other. You don't have to have a separate necessary, here's the cause, or here's the remedy. The remedy would be you don't get this. So, if you say it's a thousand bucks, someone may say, "Fine, here's a day's notice."
Right, amount for a thousand, right.
For a thousand bucks. So, you have to, you have to think about this in terms of, is it going to incentivize the behavior you want, and how long is that notice?
So, what, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Ellison, are there, do we have any of this verbiage in with our licensed administrators? Is it?
No, the superintendent's contract is completely separate from the collective bargaining agreements.
That part's just for their benefits?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And that was to align them, right? To make sure that whatever those extra considerations, to use Mr. Hall's word, are for, is whatever that is for the superintendent in terms of sick leave or whatever, that it's in alignment with what happens with the leadership team. So, I mean, go ahead, Trustee Mayberry?
Well, I'm just throwing darts at the moment, but I think at least on the voluntary resignation piece, if they gave us ninety days' notice, if they don't, then they don't get, you know, that payout, which would be all of their sick leave. Again, we're starting somewhere, but if they give us ninety days, then they're entitled to their full payout, their full sick leave. If they don't, you know, they don't get it.
Okay.
I mean, there has to be some penalty, so they don't, that's what I'm hearing, right, Mr. Hall?
Yeah, that's the way, I would characterize it as incentive, but penalty is just as fair.
At least on the voluntary side, isn't it?
Right. Incentive is just more positive.
Yeah, right, okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, okay, so the recommendation, as we can service, as we deliberate, is let's raise a notice that the superintendent would need to give us two ninety days, and I want to just make sure I restate, ninety days, and if we don't have that ninety days, then they don't have access to their sick leave payout. I think we had sick leave and do we have annual leave, however, whatever that leave is that we have in here.
So, the way the contract reads right now, if they resign or retire, Section 9B outlines what they are eligible for, and it says earned salary through the last day of employment, any accrued and unused paid vacation, and any unreimbursed appropriate expenses. So, right now, with forty-five days' notice, they get pay through the last day, unreimbursed expenses, unused vacation time. So, I think what I hear you saying, Mr. Hall, is we would potentially add a sick leave payout or some kind of other incentive to that in exchange for increasing that potentially from forty-five to ninety days.
That's one option, or we can make it that this is all lost, going back to the disincentive language, if they don't provide the ninety days. And the only thing they will get in that case would be one and three, which legally we have to pay, which is the salary earned through and unreimbursed vacation expenses. Nevada law for employees outside of a CBA, collective bargaining agreement, don't consider vacation or sick leave to be wages. So, that is something you can choose to pay or not pay upon termination of employment, unless the contract says something different.
And sick leave is referred to earlier in the contract, right? We just talked through that.
Yeah, so the clause around sick leave and the accrual rate is earlier in the contract, and then whether or not it's paid out is described in the various separation scenarios in Section 9.
Right, and it seems like it really, it probably should have been in Section 9, and we just missed it on this one because it, oh, because it wasn't a part, that's right, it wasn't a part, the retirement piece wasn't a part of that. So, we'll need to add that. So, it should be considered with those other ones, to be consistent.
Right, so I added in, you'll see in 9B, there's language that adds in, "or retirement prior to the expiration of the term."
Or retirement, mm-hmm. Yeah, but what's listed, one, two, three, sick leave is not listed. Right, we're at the bottom of page 10, sick leave is not listed there, and it's something that would be paid out generally before we put the other considerations in there. Something for us to consider whether or not, because right now, it says you don't get your sick leave. Now, we voted to pay that out because that's what leadership team members get, which requires a different action of the board, which is what, which is what happens. I would suggest that we would want to include it in here for either this is what they get or don't get, depending upon if they give us the ninety days' notice. It's their accrual, just like their vacation time, his or hers, right? Okay, I'll go, Trustee Rodriguez, you've been waiting, and then we'll jump back over here. Trustee Mayberry?
No, no, I'm just, I am on board with the ninety day notice. I mean, just seeing how much work and everything goes into funding a superintendent. I think ninety days, have a three-year, possibly four-year contract, is not too much to ask for, so.
Okay. Other commentary around that, because we can, remember, we're doing motions as we go, and so that can be something, that can be a motion if that's the pleasure of the board. We're just, we're not dealing with the payout yet, we're just dealing with how much notice should be required if someone's going to retire or resign. Yes, Trustee Church?
Recognizing this is a template, I think that's fine.
Okay, so I'm looking for...
One more, I did find something just when we're done, going backwards.
Okay, write it down so you don't forget. All right. Okay, so we're looking for, if it's the pleasure of the board, I think that, for the... Go ahead, Dr. Nicoletta, I see you're leaning in.
I'll give it a try.
So, where are you on the document?
I'm going to state that, so everybody knows.
Thank you, ma'am.
I move that, let me, my name and the document. In the Employment Agreement for Superintendent of Washoe County School District, under Section 8A, it should read termination by resignation or retirement of superintendent. Superintendent may terminate this agreement by giving at least ninety days' advanced written notice delivered to the board.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor by Dr. Nicoletta, there is a second, let's see, by Trustee Mayberry, any public comment on this, JJ? All right, all right, got it, got it. You were leaning in, I was there, all right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries, the record show that is unanimous, so we've made that change to 8A. And as we move down for further consideration...
Can we go back briefly?
If you'd like to, yes, sir.
Number six, supervision. Do we need to put something in there except for the, Mr. Starkey, what's his title, Chief Auditor?
Six, where in, can you tell us, tell me where in six?
Number six, supervision, it lists the...
Six, is it A?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Minor, but they don't, we hire the super, the chief auditors, I understand.
Yes, but the other, Mr. Starkey or whomever the auditor is, I should be more appropriately, has a, has a, yes, we hire, we hire, actually, no, actually, we don't hire, right? We have, we have, the internal auditor has a reporting line to us, right? In terms of their auditing duties, but the day-to-day responsibility goes to the superintendent.
So, the superintendent hires the chief auditor?
Last time we did a search, yeah.
Okay.
No, no, the superintendent did not hire the auditor?
Who did?
The board did? Oh, okay, well, I guess the board does hire him.
I thought so.
Okay.
So, do we need...
Oh, you know what, I wasn't the president. I'm like, I didn't hire him, but I wasn't the president. I didn't hire him.
So...
Okay, so then in here, but there is a day-to-day report, like, for an example, we're not, we aren't here day-to-day for the day-to-day oversight, so there is that line to the superintendent. I don't know if that covers what you're, what you're mentioning.
Does the superintendent do the evaluation? I mean, I don't know.
No, the evaluation of the auditor, the valuation of the auditor is the superintendent and the board president does that.
I think, I think I could cover it just by, under A, and this is not a motion yet.
Okay.
The first sentence would say, "except as otherwise provided by law."
Well, it isn't at all.
By the law, yeah, it's Nevada statute that we have to hire the chief auditor. No?
I was going to say, I don't think it is. It's the way our structure is, but I don't think it's by statute. So, you can say, unless otherwise provided by board policy.
Okay. I make a motion to amend 6A, the first sentence, to say, "except as otherwise provided by board policy, comma, the superintendent," et cetera, et cetera.
That would cover that, because that keeps that day-to-day, because again, we don't, we don't, we don't work here, we aren't here day-to-day, so we shouldn't have the day-to-day responsibility, so. There's a second, I see, okay, so there's a motion for, do we have any public comment on the, nope, okay? That was, Trustee Smith?
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries, okay? Good catch, let's make sure that's clear. All right, then we're going to slide down then to, we were still in that section...
8B.
What was it, 8B?
Yep. So, we just changed 8A to ninety days. And then, I didn't make any changes to 8B, but I think it's worth noting that...
Oh, yes.
Current language requires the board to provide thirty days' notice to terminate the superintendent without cause. And just flipping over to compensation, in that scenario... Okay, so that is 9D. So, the board terminates without cause and gives thirty day notice. You'll see that the change I added in there was any accrued and unused paid vacation and sick leave would be paid out. And then, again, that's just a consideration for the candidate, right?
That's 9D?
9D, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, 8D, let me get to where you are. Okay, any additional amount equal to one year, is that where you are?
Yep. So, if the board decides to terminate without cause and gives thirty days' notice, then the person would be eligible for their salary through the last day worked, any unused, accrued but unused vacation time and sick leave, I added that as an edit, any unreimbursed expenses, and an additional amount equal to one year of salary in effect as of the superintendent's last day of employment. So, that's a severance for a...
Severance for non-cause termination. For no cause. Okay, and those are, we're making no changes from what you recommended. I wanted to go back to when we listed before, under 9B, when we didn't have sick leave on here, that we needed to add that.
Okay.
Okay, so that would need, if everyone, we're at the very bottom of page 10, everyone, remember, we, yeah, we just talked about this a little bit. We had to do this by separate board action this time because it did not include unused sick leave here in the contract. And my recommendation is, unused sick leave should also be a part of that, that's what they recruit, and so on. So, if that's the, if you're in agreement, if that's the pleasure of the board, I'm looking for a motion to that effect.
Madam President.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do, when the superintendent terminates, does she get one hundred, she slash he, get one hundred percent of their sick leave?
So, payouts for the superintendent are strictly dictated by this agreement, so whatever you guys put in here would be what we would pay.
Okay. All I can say is, teachers don't get one hundred percent.
Well, what we aligned with is what the leadership team, and I think it should be in alignment with that, it just isn't included in B.
And in that case, it's twenty-five percent of unused but accrued sick leave.
Right, and that's what we did board action to approve for Dr. McNeil earlier. The same thing, in alignment with the leadership team.
Do we need to put verbalized?
We should be as clear as we need to be in here, if it's a, we can say unused sick leave in alignment or consistent with...
Other licensed twelve-month administrators.
Yes, same thing. With leadership team is what it really would be. Oh, is that administrators? Is that how that falls?
No, sorry, that's leadership team.
Yeah, we should say in alignment with leadership team, because that was the intention, that it's... Okay, so is that a motion, then?
Yes.
Okay, Clerk Minneto, thank you for the motion and seconded by, by him, Trustee Rodriguez, the guy right, the big guy next to, the big guy. Yeah, the rock, the rock. Motion on the floor by Clerk Minneto, seconded by Trustee Rodriguez, any public comment on any of this, no? And just make sure you flag me with it, but if I don't ask for it, he's going to elbow me, so. All right, everybody clear on the changes being made? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries, okay? It is unanimous, let's keep moving down. Okay, Ms. Ellison, we're back to...
All right, so we're back to 8C. And this describes a situation where the superintendent is terminated by the board for cause. There's a lot of language here about what that might look like. I didn't make any changes there. And in the event that they are terminated for cause, that is in Section 9B. No, sorry, hang on.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yep, terminated for cause. I think I'm confusing myself.
9B is payment, 9B is payment in the event of termination. And it says, if the employment is terminated for cause...
But it also says as the result of the superintendent's voluntary resignation.
Right, or the, you're right, is that where you were directing us, or no?
Or retirement. And then, okay, so then we added sick leave to be consistent with LT for this situation.
Yes.
Okay. So, in this situation, they would get earned salary...
We just voted on that, yes, yes.
So, we can skip over 9C.
Yes, we're done with, we're through page 10.
Great. Sorry about that.
Oh, it's okay. And then there were some editorial changes in C, and we can all see that.
So, my question for Mr. Hall was, by making the change to Section B in consideration of the ninety day notice period, do we need to add any language that, about that notice period?
No, with the motion's already done, that will be sufficient for what we needed to eliminate that ambiguity.
Okay, perfect.
Well, that's right, you said there was some ambiguity, so.
And are we leaving references to at-will, that verbiage?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Section C just speaks to disability or death, and then again, the board has the opportunity to place the superintendent on disability retirement status if applicable to the individual circumstances. And then, this is where I added in language, remember back on performance bonus, where we talked about if it wasn't going to be tied to an evaluation? So, if it gets to the end of the term, or the person is separated because of disability or death, then I've added language in there to reflect that you all may award a performance bonus.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think we're good?
And then, we talked about Section D, so we added in and sick leave there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the last page, I changed the dates, and that's everything.
Okay. Okay, lots of changes, but we went through them step by step before, and before we, this is finalized, we'll have to make a motion and approve the entire contract, right? A template contract.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so if, any, let me get a little public comment on that, okay, wants me, Trustee Church?
I'm not sure if I'm getting ahead of myself. Very, very diminished, doesn't, I don't think it requires a motion. I had a couple of points in here, because this is cut and paste, it uses the word her, not his or her.
Oh, does it?
So, just be aware of that, do a word search.
So, let's, yeah, we should catch those editorially, yeah, good catch, good catch.
Thank you.
Okay. Other than that, been looking for a motion to approve this, this contract template as changed.
I'm sorry, I was looking for his or her.
Oh, no, should catch them, you don't have to worry about it.
So, this is the final motion, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we're looking, unless there's other commentary.
Oh, I do, I definitely.
Okay.
Just a clarification on page eleven, D, we... Under number two, we are or are not adding sick leave?
I'm recommending the addition of sick leave.
You see it, it says and sick. Did you see it right there?
So if you all want to discuss that and have a motion, you can. Otherwise, it would be included in the blanket.
It is there, Dr. Day. We appreciate that, though.
Okay.
Almost. Trustee Church, and then we'll go to Trustee Mayberry.
Yeah, I apologize. I was looking up chief auditor just to be sure, and then that shiny object of his or her got in my way. On the termination such as
Can you tell us where you are?
D, page nine.
Page nine.
And I think that's where I'm at.
D, okay.
The bottom line, this is definitely... I've been waiting for this for Mr. Hall. Many contracts say a flat rate. This is the most you're going to get, you know? And that satisfies all legal claims. I mean, the worst-case scenario, we're going to give you two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and that will satisfy all claims. And many of them now have mediation mandatory, which is different than arbitration, followed by arbitration. Unless you can talk me out of it, I'm a big fan of those. So you're the expert. I've been waiting for this moment, so could you weigh in on that?
Sure, I can come in on a couple of those. I'll start with the end where you mentioned arbitration. I used to be a big fan of arbitration. I am not a huge fan of arbitration anymore. It's become more expensive than court cases because you still have to do all the same discovery. It used to be a more expedited, quicker process with less discovery. That's not the case really anymore. And we tend to have arbitrators because they're selected by voluntary of the parties. They tend to kind of split the baby a lot. You don't get the rulings where you might get a case thrown out in a court. Often arbitrators aren't willing to do that. So arbitration years ago, I think, was a really good alternative. My personal experience is that arbitration has lost its luster and is more expensive, and often you result in worse results. So arbitration, it's a tough one. It's private, which is probably the biggest benefit of it.
So let's deal with arbitration first. Historically, unfortunately, we have seen this drag through the newspapers, the media. Every time there's a court filing, every time there's a deposition, I can see in this case arbitration being a option. I'm not sure, but again, I'm asking for your legal opinion.
I think he did it.
Because of that, you know?
Does that change his opinion?
That's why I brought that up. Privacy is the biggest pro. It keeps a lot of that out of the public eye, but I'm not sure that's necessarily a good thing. It can have advantages and it can have disadvantages. But that's... That has become, in my opinion, the biggest benefit of private arbitration compared to court filing.
Does it speed up the process?
It used to, and I would say, given COVID now, yes, it was getting about parallel timing. Arbitration was still a little faster. With COVID, arbitration is certainly faster now.
This is really a tough one, and I hate to move ahead until we resolve it. Can you tell us? I guess you probably can. If you've talked to Mr. Roberto, if he's weighed in on it?
On that question, yeah, I couldn't reveal if there was an attorney-client privilege discussion there.
I was just about to say, I don't think he's in.
I mean, it's something you just raised, and it's not in this contract. You can draw your own conclusions from that.
I have a question. May I ask a clarifying question? So to add an arbitration provision here, wouldn't that be adding a step that is not currently available? I guess what remedies do you see exist in the contract right now?
Well, right now, the contract attempts to avoid both by saying you're going to get what's in this contract no matter what. And that's good to have that language. Nevertheless, people still file despite that language being there. And so if we added an arbitration provision, they're going to say, well, look, you didn't even believe your own language, you put in an arbitration provision. So we would have to simultaneously modify that other language, which is pretty good language for you.
And I think I would just draw attention to some of that language that I think addresses some of your earlier concerns in section nine under payment in the event of termination. You'll see, effective upon the termination of this agreement, W C S D will be obligated to pay the superintendent, or in the event of death, the superintendent's estate. Only such compensation as is provided in this section nine and in lieu of all other amounts and in settlement and complete release of all claims the superintendent may have against W C S D.
Yeah, but I think your light's on, I think you're going to weigh in on that.
No, his light will still on.
That was kind of my point. The contract says it, and they're supposed to get that money in exchange for a complete release. But historically, they don't always follow that. They come up with an argument why the contract is invalid or some reason that that doesn't apply, and they file anyway.
Right, like civil rights, and then they want punitive damages.
They can attempt to do that. That's very hard to get in contract cases under Nevada law. You have to cite some other statute like civil rights in order to access those other remedies.
So my
I saw your... Trustee Mayberry, just as you... Because you're kind of thinking and talking, and this way we can kind of...
I have one more question. I want to apologize to my colleagues. I know we're beating the dead horse here, so I'll make it real quick. But looking at Mr. Hall, particularly a question for you. Page eleven, section D is in Delta. This is the event that the employment agreement is terminated by the board without cause. So presumably, there's something that is not positive has happened, right? Without cause.
Generally, but, you know... I'll just say generally, yeah.
Okay, I get it. Yeah, so as I read on, we talk about salary through the last day of employment, any incurred in unused paid vacation, sick leave, any unreimbursed appropriate expenses. And then number four, an additional amount equal to one year's salary in effect as of superintendent's last day of employment. So I mean, the way I read that, that's an additional annual salary. Is that... Does that cause anybody any discomfort? Is that standard? That's just a lot of money for somebody who's being terminated without cause.
In my mind, it's because it's without cause. And we have to remember where this is. You can have the whole board flip over, and then four people don't like it, and then you're... That's part of it in a situation such as this, because you are at will. It's a big risk for the person taking the position if you didn't do anything wrong because the definition is without cause. Right? And we don't have to look very far to see circumstances without naming anything going on in maybe other parts of districts that we all may know about. That's why it gives me a level of, hey, if it's without cause, it's going to take...
So just
No, I think that's a good question. It's a very good question. Because it's a lot of money, but it's no cause. So to me, that's kind of this, right?
So just to confirm, Mr. Hall, going back to the arbitration question, is it your belief that if we add arbitration language, it potentially weakens the strength of the other language that says this is it, this is the contract, that's all?
Yeah, we would have to carefully word that to try and avoid that possibility.
Thank you, counsel. Trustee Church?
I still have a couple of issues, but I... This is the one I actually mentioned before, so now we've segued back to that. I'd said by two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I think a year's salary plus all those other benefits that we pay out is too much. Again, it's negotiable, it's a template, but I'd like to see it reduced to, at least to get the feel for my colleagues, maybe two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
I think... I'll go first because it's kind of... I think I just kind of shared, I think a one-year salary because you're being terminated without cause, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand isn't one-year salary. Isn't that... I think that's asking a lot of someone that you're taking a big risk and you haven't done anything wrong, at least nothing we can cite contractually, in my mind. That's just my two cents. But certainly looking to my... Because that's just mine, right? So... We can decide. We think... Clerk Manetto, you like that?
Thank you, Madam President. I would agree that a year's salary is, under the circumstances, probably reasonable because it's without cause. That's what keeps going in my head. Thank you.
That's what goes in my head, is without cause. At least nothing we can call you on, so to speak. Who knows what's going on behind the scenes? I don't know, right?
It reduces the chance of litigation, does it not?
That, with the counsel?
I would agree, it reduces the chance of litigation because if you terminate someone without cause and they get almost nothing, or something they consider to be unfair, they're more likely to say, well, there's a reason around this, and file a lawsuit, and the cost of all that can increase. So this is a policy choice, clearly. That number is a policy, not a legal one. But I do think that you guys are discussing the right things that go into that, including recruitment. If someone looks at this and knows they're going to get nothing, why would they come here? So there's a lot of issues that go into this, but this is a policy discussion at this point.
I do think that's a big consideration as I say it, because, you know, boards turn over. We're elected, we're in an elected body, right? And so whomever we hire is going to get hired by one board, and then two years, four years, whatever years by now, it could be... It could look different and substantially, whatever, right? Even the small... It's a big risk. And I do think it impacts. It's a big risk, so... Trustee Church?
Yeah, I'm really torn on this, but obviously my... I defer to my colleagues, with the understanding, again, this is a template, not a final product. So if I can, then I'll move on to mediation. Is there any reason we couldn't put a mediation requirement in even though we would still do, allow legal action?
No, mediation is not one that we have to do a lot of legal tweaking to show that it is inconsistent, so we could add that. And going back to arbitration, there's things we can say to try and make arbitration fit within this, and I think we could accomplish that if the board wanted arbitration. It's just a significant amount of work, and we have to be very careful.
Sure.
Mediation, not the same concerns.
So I'll make some statements, and then you can... I really, really am glad you're here for your advice. I've been to mediation many times over legal contracts, being on a couple HOA boards, et cetera, in my prior employment. I like it. You go in thinking you're not going to resolve it, and you walk out half the time having resolved at least part of it. Maybe not the whole thing, but you compartmentalize, and sometimes you resolve everything. It also, and I want to phrase this delicately, puts a little pressure on the person who's considering litigation to play ball, to be forthcoming in the mediation, in fair... I forget the legal term, but they have to enter it with fair intent. So it benefits the employer, I think. So I'm... Based on those statements, I'd like your opinion.
So my experience with mediation tends to be pretty positive. There are definitely mediations you go into, and the other party is only there because they had to be, and they don't do it in good faith. And the mediators tend to detect that pretty quickly and end it, and you're done, and you move on to dealing with the contract. But mediations do have a pretty high level of success, even if it's not complete. So I'd agree with a lot of what you said. Mediation as a requirement is not a bad thing to add or to potentially consider adding to this.
Well, good. And if... So this is where I'm not too up on it. Does the mediation... What does the mediator issue? For example, I think I've seen it where they say one side did not enter it in good faith, and that's actually admissible at trial. Can you comment?
So those kind of mediation clauses where you're asking the mediator to make a determination of bad faith are pretty rare. I've seen them. I've only actually handled one of those where we actually had that happen. I didn't find it to be all that effective because the mediator didn't like being in that place. In particular, the one that I handled, we had three of the best mediators turn it down because of that requirement. So we ended up kind of with our second-tier mediator because they were going to be forced to make an intent finding, and that took out some of the better mediators from it. So I've seen them, they're not common, it has some serious downsides.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing you like mediation. It may be worth putting in. And again, I'm trying to be careful how I phrase my experiences with mediation so that it doesn't sound like I'm playing hardball with potentially, you know, litigation, but we've had it here over and over. Where would we put that in? Do you have an idea?
I haven't looked at the sections, but I would be adding that likely...
And I guess my next question...
In that case, what we would probably do is we'd pull out the section that Ms. Ellison read before, and we make it its own section along with mediation. So we would create a remedies and relief section where we would pull out, and I'm looking for it right now.
So you would create a new section?
Yeah, we would pull the language likely from ten and create a new section, and I don't have the title off the top of my head, I'd have to draft it, but it'd probably be remedies and release, remedies, relief, and release, something like that.
Would it be reasonable if I just made a fairly generic motion that we direct legal to?
Well, let's have some more conversation first.
Okay.
Because we don't know if we're there, and I just thought Dr. Nicolet was leaning in, and where you... No, no. Well, I will say this, I would just want to know, I don't mind mediation if it's something that can be helpful in the contract, right? And I think that's what it comes down to, can it be helpful in the contract should something bad happen? Hopefully, nothing bad happens, and none of us want anything bad to happen, and hopefully it does not. I will say that, and when I first joined the board, that was the very end of 2014, like the last meeting of the year, the board was just going into mediation with a couple of superintendents ago. A lawsuit was filed, and then before, then the judge said, hey, I want you to go mediation before I deal with the lawsuit. And then we know that also happened with our former superintendent. Lawsuit was filed, and the judge said, hey, I want you to go mediation before we deal with the lawsuit. Both of them were resolved in mediation. So my question would be, is what is the difference between the two? I want to... I just want to do what's best for us, right?
Yeah, so we're back to contract language. If we were to add a mediation provision, we would probably... My recommendation would be to structure it such that it must be done before a lawsuit is filed. And that way, we're able to capitalize on the private nature of it. And have, you know, before they make a big splashy claim or something like that, we can attempt to mediate it with them. If mediation fails, then it would proceed to litigation. So it would be a step before litigation.
Because in the cases I'm talking about, I got on the board, and the next meeting, we had all-day mediation. The next day, I was like, oh, okay. Yeah, and then it happens. So we would want to put it in that it has to happen be prior to a lawsuit being filed.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay. And then if it did go to a lawsuit, then the judge would know, okay, they already tried mediation, and so that would not be a requirement?
The language we would be putting in is that they can't sue.
Oh, okay.
The contract... Now, they still may if mediation fails.
Right.
But a judge may throw the case out immediately if they fail to go to mediation first. Because the judges tend to like that, A, and two, it's a pretty clear contract provision. So that would be... I see a lot of positives to adding a mediation and some pretty small negatives.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay.
All right, before we go any further, do we have any public comment on mediation? Nope, none of that. Trustee Church, back to what you were
I think I can make a very... Let's see if this works. I'd like to make a motion that we direct legal to add a mediation contract... Mediation... What's the word?
Clause.
Clause to the contract as appropriate.
Okay, so we ask counsel? We want to say counsel, because if we say legal, we want to make sure it isn't a general chief general counsel.
Yeah. I'm trying to do it very generically.
Yeah, I know what you mean. So we'll call it board counsel. We ask board counsel to, okay? So the motion, if I can restate, make sure I don't go off track, is that we ask board counsel, right, to draft and include a clause requiring mediation before lawsuits as discussed. Did that capture what you said? And then, okay, and so we have a motion on the floor from Trustee Church, we have a second from Trustee Rodriguez. Any further discussion from anyone? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion carries, so we're good with that piece. That was unanimous as well. So unless there's something else that we'd like to change or add, or perhaps on the contract, then we need... Now we need a motion, a final motion, then to approve the contract template, right, as edited, which means that will include the changes we made and the direction, the request to... He doesn't work for us, we can't really... the request to, he doesn't work for us, we can't really, well, he kind of does, but anyway, the request that board counsel add that clause that we just approved. So looking for a motion to that effect. Motion by trustee Smith, yes?
Just to clarify, that motion would include other things that we talked about.
Yes, exactly. Absolutely, it'd be the whole thing, just as changed and discussed. So I have motion on the floor from trustee Smith, second from trustee Rodriguez, I'm looking at JJ, so no public comment. Okay. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion is carried. All right, thank you, Ms. Ellison, we have a contract template. We, oh, my God, we, contract, contract template on that, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, this is what we will do, why don't we take, why don't we take our dinner break now, then we can jump back into, back into the business. So we'll take a 20-minute break. All right? 20-minute break now. We'll be back, let's just say at 10 till 5, 10 till 5. All right, very excited. Okay, so we're going to jump into agenda item 3.03. This is presentation and discussion on the newly adopted K-5 Science Instructional Materials, Full Option Science System, or FOS system, for a presentation and discussion only. And before, I'm just going to turn it over to you, Dr. Parks, and then we have, well, Dina's not here, but Tracy's here. Okay, well, welcome, glad to have you.
Thank you and good evening, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil and Board of Trustees. And yes, we have the privilege of having a master teacher who is now our K through 5 Science Program facilitator. If you watched her career, you would know that she is exemplary when it comes to teaching science. And one of the things we're really excited about with FOS is, as you'll notice these pictures, we're not referring kids back to their textbook and saying, read this, read this, read this. It's very hands-on oriented. So I have spoken with Mrs. Lofton earlier and I bragged about what a highly collaborative classroom this is. And she again is going to be asking you to collaborate over some, some science. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Lofton and she's going to get right into the presentation for us. Go ahead, Tracy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or I guess it's almost evening, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil and the Board of Trustees. For the record, I'm Tracy Lofton, have been with the district for 20 years. This is my third year in this position and I've taught at both the elementary and the middle school level. When I went to middle school, it was to teach science full-time because I just loved it. So super excited to be able to tell you more about what we're doing with this, this new implementation. So I did want to start by letting you know that all of the pictures in this presentation are our students. I, when I found out I needed to put this together, I sent an email out to some of the teachers that had been in our trainings this year and got just an immediate response back. We're so excited to share what's going on in their classrooms. So I did want to give you a little bit of background because I know a lot of you weren't here when we did go through the adoption. A little over a year ago, it was approved. FOS stands for Full Option Science System. It is a comprehensive program. It's a K-5 program that is a year-long program and includes both science and engineering. And our contract included all of the things that students are going to need and teachers are going to need to be able to do this hands-on learning. I did want to point out that this was a huge investment. We're very thankful that we, that we were able to do this. But when I went and put it into perspective, over a seven-year contract, which is what we have, it comes out to only be about $25 per student per year. And when we have 36 weeks of instruction in a year, that's less than a dollar a week per student. So this is a really worthwhile investment that we've made. I said that it was a year-long program and based on our allocation of instructional time for elementary sites and the suggestion of a 45-minute lesson, we've designed pacing for teachers that is 45 minutes a day for four days a week for K-2 students and 45 minutes a day every day for grades 3 through 5. Our, our planning for this implementation started as soon as it was approved. We wanted to make sure that we had things ready for teachers right away. And so in the spring of 2020, we gathered 34 different teachers to help put together the pacing guides and to contribute to what the professional learning needed to look like. We started posting resources in our grade-level teams right away so that teachers would have those. We worked with the vendors to make sure that we had all of the materials ready to go before that professional learning was to take place. It was really important to the teachers that they had that. And they start planning in May for the next year. So having those in place was really important. We, of course, were faced with not knowing whether we would be in person or not in the fall. And so our professional learning that we designed for the teachers, we had to do it virtually. We knew that that was what was going to have to happen. But we also knew that it needed to be hands-on. And so we designed a blended learning class that included three hours of synchronous time that was with both FOS staff and district representatives, and then a three-hour asynchronous learning that was also supported by teachers, by our teacher, science teacher leaders. In May, the training started. So there were teachers that wanted to start the trainings in May and those went all the way through the summer, May, June, July and August. It was a one-day training and it was a trade-out day for teachers. We ended up running a total of 70 different sessions for teachers. These teachers had a choice about choosing between the grade-level specific class that they wanted to do, which would focus on the unit they would start with, or they were able to, if they already had some experience with FOS, which some of them did, they could choose abandoned training that was focused either on assessment in FOS or science-centered language development. So it didn't go over the basics that the teachers that were new to it would need. We also offered two administrator sessions for those that wanted to learn more in-depth. We had in the spring met with every principal, Dina and I, to give them a heads-up about what to expect. Based on those trainings that happened, the summer trainings, the feedback was, we need in-person trainings. And luckily, we were able to make that happen in the fall. So we designed some more lessons, some more trainings that were grade-level specific and they had to deal with the grade level, with the unit that they were going to be starting. We've done some other collaborations to help support learning in the classrooms with the GLAD facilitators. And we've been working really hard on the planning of getting living organisms out to teachers as well. As the spring started, we started our Unit 3 trainings for teachers. We've gotten the learning facilitators involved because we really needed that contact at the schools for the delivery of the living organisms. And then we have a meet your organism trainings that are virtual, just one-hour trainings that they, and we are recording those so that teachers can go back and watch them if they weren't able to attend. I wanted to acknowledge that some materials are not provided in the kits because just of the practicality of it, such as soil for planting, mealworms, needed brand to live in. And we received donations and grants from both the Assistance League and Moana Nursery. Moana Nursery provided 250, one and a half cubic feet of soil that went out to schools and it was a big endeavor that the warehouse and everybody got involved in. We want to engage you in some learning that's going to come from 3rd grade. This is from the Physical Science Standard, Physical Science Strand, and I want to give you a little bit of background about what that looks like, what are 3rd graders learning about. So the core ideas that fall for, these two core ideas of forces and motion and energy show up in 3rd grade, in kindergarten, 3rd grade and 4th grade. In the kindergarten level, it's really basic with just pushes and pulls and how do those pushes and pulls affect motion? In 3rd grade, they're going to start looking at the idea that objects have multiple forces acting on them at any time and that a change in motion occurs if there is, if the forces are unbalanced, otherwise the forces are balanced. They also start to talk about patterns of an object's motion and how we can predict those based on repeating patterns. And when we're talking about forces, we're talking about both contact forces and non-contact forces such as magnetism and static electricity. 4th grade is really focused on transfer of energy. It's the big physical science idea for 4th grade. But here, we're going to make that first connection for students between energy and force. So that's the first time that'll come up and it's when colliding objects, transfer energy. So that would be where that connection would be in 4th grade. It won't be until middle school that they'll start putting numbers to these things and they'll be looking at Newton's laws. So in the, in the elementary school, it's all qualitative observations in order to make their determinations, their explanations. The other thing that's really important about our new standards is the fact that we don't learn these core ideas in isolation. They're always learned as scientists would through the practices of science. And for this particular unit, our focus practices are going to be with asking questions and planning and carrying out investigations. And then we're going to use the cross-cutting concepts of patterns and cause and effect to help us explain what we're seeing. The other really important thing about our new standards is that they are meant to be what scientists do. So we want to model our learning the same way that scientists learn things. And scientists explain their world and they explain phenomena that happens. And so that's what we want to make sure is embedded in what our students are doing. In the FOS program, they're going to investigate concrete phenomena directly through common This is an access and equity issue. So no student has to come to the table knowing or having an experience in order to be able to engage in the work of the lesson. In order to organize all of those common experiences, FOS has, uses anchor phenomena to organize these common experiences over the course of learning. So in this particular case, the anchor phenomenon that we're going to be talking about is going to cover multiple lessons. It's, and it will, it will really be about six weeks long that they'll be able to come back to this and connect what they're doing in the classroom to something, something So we'll start our lesson. I was telling Dr. Parks that I will have a hard time sitting here to teach a lesson, sitting down. But, so that I can speak into the microphone, that's what we're going to do. Our anchor phenomena for this is that when two, two children are riding their skateboards down a hill and they end up in different places on that hill. You have a little mini notebook that's been passed out to you. You can use this to write on or you can just think about this right now. I'd like to point out your responsibilities as a student. So, and today, I really want you to think about asking questions and then connecting your ideas to what other ideas are. So I ask you this question. What causes those two children rolling down a hill on skateboards to stop in different places? So I want you to just to think to yourself, it's a little alone zone moment, for you to either ask a question about what more you need to know or to have a reason that you think that that might happen. Okay. I would like you to turn to your shoulder partner, so I understand that you all know where your shoulder partner should be. And I want you to share one of either one of your ideas or one of your questions, knowing If you could, I forgot to, I forgot to tell you what our quiet signal's going to be. This is what, so when I say waterfall, waterfall, I want you to say shh. Okay. So did anybody have the same idea or question that your partner had? Yeah? Could, could you share, share something that was the same, if somebody had something that was the same?
The weight, the weight of the two.
Would, could impact where, how, where, why they landed at different places? What other ideas did we have or questions?
Going down the hill on the street is one side asphalt, the other side concrete, have different textures.
So there could be different textures or different surfaces that they were on? The speed that they were going?
Yes, ma'am.
Did anybody have a question that you wondered, that you needed to have answered before you could answer that question?
I almost felt like this could have been trick question, are they on the same hill?
Hmm.
Are they on the same hill?
Similar to that, do they both have the same skateboard?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what you said. And did, did they both start at the same place with the same rate of speed?
Okay.
And did they both weigh the same?
So just like our students, you've been able to think a lot about this very small phenomena, right? But it leads to a lot of questions and in the classroom, you might have a guiding question board or something where we would post these things. And then as we learn more and we can find those answers to those, we can refer back and, and, and say, oh, we found the answer to this, we still need to find the answer to these other ones. But now to start the lesson, I wanted to tell you that before this would have started, students already had a experience with the magnets. So they've already done the non-contact forces and have worked with balanced and unbalanced systems. And now, we're going to have you examine a new system. And in this new system, you're going to get these two discs, these two plastic discs. And we're going to make a ramp. And we're going to make a ramp using this cardboard. And I'm going to have you put it together using these clothespins. So you're going to put the clothes, you're going to put the clothespins on the edge of the board and then you're going to attach a clothespin to a clothespin. Then you're, then you're going to have a ramp. Now you're going to be, everybody should have their own discs, but you're going to share your ramp. Students would be working on the floor for this. I'm not going to invite you to the floor, but I would suggest that as a team, you monitor where these discs might end up so that they aren't rolling around on the floor. So help your partner to catch anything that's falling down. What I want you to do is to find out what kind of motion can you create or can you observe with these two discs? I will point out to you that these discs have these kind of notches on the edge and you can do anything that you'd like with these two discs. Okay, we're going to take one minute of exploration. You just want to find out what kind of motion can you make?
Want to stand up and see what they're doing?
Well, it's important to take turns. Well, it's important to take turns. Waterfall waterfall. Okay. So, it's important that everybody put your materials down, and has your hands free, you might want to clasp your hands. So, last time we were talking about forces at work. What are the forces that are at work in the systems that you've been working with? So, the teacher would have gone through, created this diagram with students, and then gone through and used the word cards, which is the vocabulary that they had established earlier in the last investigation, in order to label that as a review of that previous investigation. I'm going to just label some really quickly, and about what that would have looked like. So when, do I need to be behind the mic? This is hard. So when we were holding this and it was not moving, there was no change of motion, we had to balance the system. When, when we let go of the, of the disc. What caused a change in that is that we had an unbalanced system, and we saw a change in motion. And that change in motion was caused by, students would come up with these things, gravity was affecting it, they would have also talked about the force on the ramp itself. And then, we would have asked, I know that you didn't get to do this on the, on the floor, but how would it have, and some of you did a really good job getting that to roll down that ramp without it just falling over. What would have caused it to stop? And then that's where they would say friction is that, has that other force. So... I'm going to use my notes. So now let's talk about patterns of motion. When, if we were to talk about patterns of motion, what did you observe? Is there a pattern that you observed in anything that you did with your wheels? Any patterns? It rolled down. Did everybody notice that it?
Sorry, does it roll down? Sorry.
So everybody noticed that it did, did it roll down every time? No. What else happened?
The speed increased as it got closer to the end of the ramp.
You thought the speed increased as it got closer to the end of the ramp? But did it ever roll up? No. Sometimes it fell over, so if you couldn't get it to roll. But if it was rolling, it rolled down. So that's our most basic pattern. Did anybody see any other patterns? Or any other types of motion?
It was wobbly.
Wobbly? How did you get it to wobble?
It wobbled by itself.
It wobbled by itself? When you, when you let, do you let just one go?
Yeah, you just let one go, and it got, it got, it would, it would wobble.
It would wobble on the way down? Did anybody see any other kinds of motion?
Trusty Church was really good at this. He put three of them together, and then they were really solid, and they just trucked their way right down altogether.
And so they were able to roll all together down? Was there a difference in that motion from just one wheel?
More stable?
More stable? How could you tell? What was your observation?
Didn't wobble as much.
It didn't wobble as much? Okay.
And it went straighter.
Did anybody do anything with the notches?
We tried.
We tried.
You tried?
We experimented.
Only because I want you to be, be experimenters for our next part. I wanted to just demonstrate, so if you did connect them together, that it will wobble that way.
What happened? Do it, I missed it. Do it again.
I'll do it, I'll do it again.
We were trying to roll this. Dang, that was good.
So... All four. So, you can imagine, I'm going to, I'm going to say, hands-free. Put your, put your, put your materials down, hands-free. Do you notice, that you, you noticed that the shape made the pattern of motion different? We observed a different shape, the pattern was different. So we're going to look at some other patterns, and how we can make different motion. What would be, a lot of you mentioned that this fell over when you were rolling it down. What, what could we do to make it more stable, besides what Trusty Church did with adding, by putting more together? Is there another, what else might we need? If you want, if you were to get more things from me, what would you want to make?
Yep.
Stabilizer.
Toothpicks, a straw? Okay. Well, I happen to have these green shafts that you can use as an axle. I will point out, so, you're going to be-
I will need all this stuff back.
I'm going to be at the house doing this.
I want you to, I, I want you to pretend that this isn't being passed out to you, and that your hands are still free, so that you can listen to directions. In the classroom, we would have-
Look at Jeff, he's already cheating, see?
We would have students, we would have a material station, and students would have jobs. And then part of those jobs would be to go and pick up the materials for their group, and come and bring them back. So you wouldn't have these in front of you at the, at the time. But, what I want to point out to you is that on these discs, one side is completely smooth, and the other side has circles on them. That is the side that you want to insert the straw from. So, the straw can be inserted into any of the holes, so the idea is that it's going to be tighter from the other side. So, the side with the circles, that are kind of like imprints, is where you're going to, and kind of do a little twisting, hold it close here, not far out here, and you can insert it. Again, you can insert it in any of the holes. This also fits on the outside, in some of the outsides. You can also put them, the straws, in that, that section too. Now, our focus question for today is, how can we change the motion of wheel and axle systems? Okay? So that's what we're going to try to do, but we want to focus on cause and effect relationships. So before we get started, I want you and your partner to decide and think about, what are some questions that you could investigate? Meaning, what are you going to try, and what effect do you think that would have? Okay? So, I won't make you write these things down, but discuss with your partner what you want to try. And then, you can get started trying. And we'll take two minutes.
What time do we start here?
Oops. Are, are using three wheels in there, or what they're trying, they've got three wheels on theirs. Oh! Now make sure you, make sure you're recording in some way. You can use pictures or words, so that you can remember what you've tried, and what the result or the effect was. Oh, I didn't, I wasn't watching my two minutes. Okay. Waterfall waterfall. So when you do waterfall waterfall, you have to take everything out of your hands, so that you can shhh. Okay. So, now, we want to share some of the things that you found. And in the, in the classroom, we'd have a common area where kids could bring up what they have done, and they would share. I'm going to have you just hold yours up and tell us a little bit about it. But I want to show some of the other tools that we have for our students. So, some of the words that you could use to share your thinking. And then, if you'd like to add on to what somebody else has done, or respond to their idea, these are some other ide, phrases that you can use to help engage with the ideas of others. So is there a group that would like to start?
So we observed, I, we observed, not just I. We observed that when we did it like this, it went faster, but it didn't go straight because it had more power, because of the four wheels. When we did it like this, it was balanced, but also when we did a, a big one in the middle, and a two yellow ones at the end, we saw that you needed balance, not afraid to go straight down.
What do you, could you say more about the balance? Do you mean, to describe the, what, what was the motion of that particular system?
Only the, since the middle one, the big one, was the only one that had, like, the biggest, was the only one touching the, the ramp. So there was unbalanced.
So it was unbalanced, and what did you observe? Did it wobble? Did it go straight?
It wobbled.
It wobbled? Okay. Thank you for sharing. Representative Gomez? You felt that it went faster, though? Okay? Okay. How about somebody else? And in the, in the classroom, one of the jobs would be a reporter, and everybody would report. But I would like you to volunteer for me, unless you would like me to call on you. Have just one or two more shares. Go ahead.
We'll share. We thought that if the wheels were further apart, that they would travel at a different speed than if they were closer together, but we observed that they actually traveled at the same speed, regardless of how far apart they were.
There's a good, so you were able to test the distance of the wheels as a cause, and you noticed that the effect was not any different. Did it roll straight?
Yes, both times.
When you used two wheels that were the same size, and it didn't matter how far they were apart. Thank you, Trusty Smith. And Church?
Well, we put the four wheels together, and we were talking about that too, as far as stability. So the farther you go out, and you think about this with cars, right? Because if you have a wide-wheel base, your car is more stable than if you have a low-wheel base, right? So, but it didn't change really the speed or anything. And then we were trying to build a four-wheeler, but we didn't have the other axle that we needed. So I'm sure that we can do that next time.
Did anybody, did anybody, did anybody have a system that did not roll straight? Can you hold up, can you hold up your system that did not roll straight? Anybody that had something that didn't roll straight? Could you hold that up for everybody to see? So does everybody, I want everybody to look at everybody else's. Is there, is there a pattern within these systems that you can see that might have caused them to not roll straight? Why do you think they didn't roll straight?
When they have different sizes.
The wheels are different sizes. Now, that's true of this system, and this system, and this system, but what about, what about that system? The wheels are the same size.
Too close together.
So, so we've, we have a lot of ideas out there. And with students, we would, after they got to share their designs, they would get to now more formally create their investigation to either determine, to find something new, to try out something that somebody else has done. And then, we would come back, and they would then get to answer this focus question in words and/or pictures, which would end up being the formative assessment for this particular lesson.
When you say in pictures, would they, would they draw them on the?
Yep.
They would draw, they actually draw them on the-
They would draw exactly what their, their system was, and they could label it, and if they thought it was because of the different sized wheels, we would encourage them to write those labels in. They can use words as well. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. Oh, I wanted to mention the, I gave you just a piece of paper. But in the classroom, we want them to have a science notebook, we recommend a composition notebook, something that they will consecutively add to throughout the year, and then can also refer back to. After the students would write, the final part of this lesson is for them to then share what they've written with somebody else that was not their partner. They would get up, find somebody else, and read to them, or explain to them what they've written and drawn out. So that we can, so that would conclude this particular lesson, it would be a 45-minute lesson in the classroom. I'm going to have you put all of your materials back into that little baggie. And I want to tell you more about where this instruction would then go.
So, and real quick, while you're passing in your materials, key concept too is the vocabulary up on the board. This is the vocabulary we'd be trying to get our students to use, to use academic vocabulary in their learning, because it's going, as, as we were saying earlier, it's going to build, so we want them to own that vocabulary.
And to add on to that, there are these equipment photo cards. And so for every piece of equipment, they have a picture of them with the term on it. So this is vocabulary we would want to make sure that all students knew before they started, so that they could engage in the lesson. These are also available in Spanish. So, another great thing about FOS is that all of the student-facing materials are available in both English and Spanish. Those are mostly used in the, in the TWE schools. The two-way immersion schools are the ones that would mostly access that, but for our newcomers, that could also be helpful.
Once again, there's always one.
This is actually where you call physical proximity, and you come up to the students, and you politely ask them.
And how is that working for you, Dr. McNeil?
Well, she laughed.
Right.
So, we would now want to come back to our question board. What did you- What did you discover that might help us explain why the children ended up in different places on their skateboards? Different places on the hill after going down on their skateboards? Okay, and that we would just do some reflection. We'd want kids to talk together with a shoulder partner in a small group, and then we could share out. At this point, we do not have to have a final answer. That's not, that's not the goal here. We've got more investigations to do.
She's still laughing, we can hear her.
You just had a piece of paper, but I mentioned earlier that that science notebook was really important. And it's used for students to record their ideas. It's used for them to organize data, for them to answer focus questions, so the teacher can use that as formative assessment. It is encouraged, that it is students' own work. So, and that they can create it that makes the most sense to them. So it supports a variety of things, including all of those integrations with literacy and, and writing. Where the rest of this, this particular investigation, so I said this investigation, this will be three weeks long, where they're going to be investigating patterns of motion. And I think it's really important to note that they're going to get to investigate more systems. The next system that they investigate is with cups. And then they'll use cups with pennies, so they can change different variables. But the cup is similar to that wheel and axle system that is going to be. And that particular lesson also has some challenges involved with that. Then they move on to the twirly bird investigation. They're going to get to control variables in this particular one by either changing the length of the wings on this, or they could change the amount of weight on the bottom. They, some kids like to choose different colored paper as the variable that they're going to do. Anything that they want to do, they get to set that up. And then the final investigation here is with tops. And they're going to get to investigate more about the weight and how that might affect things, the size, the placement. And then make those connections back to our very first one, where they were rolling them down the hill, and the observations that they made there. All of these investigations are also followed by informational text. And the program includes both print and ebook, so it's available online at any time, they can access it from home. There are also audio files to help make that accessible for all students. And the ebook itself will read to students and includes embedded videos where appropriate. When students may not have experience with something, it will give a video of, of that. There are both English and Spanish versions of this. And as you can see from this example, this would have happened after the second investigation, because they would have done the cup investigation as well as the wheel and axle, and then done this reading. I think that thinking about the patterns of motion is then they're going to look at those other items and try to make predictions based on the structure of those items. There is also on the website interactive activities. There are virtual investigations. There are tutorials, all for students. There are videos that go along where appropriate. It also has resources on this FOS web for teachers. So there are prep videos. There are PowerPoint slides that are already created for teachers that prefer to use those. I am not one of those teachers, that's just why you didn't see them here. But I know that there are teachers that like those. And the other important thing about this is that when distance learning, if that ever has to, I don't even want to speak the words, but we, there are resources here that would accommodate distance learning. Every unit is going to have some point that students will go outside to connect the learning in the classroom to what's, to outdoors. In this, for this particular unit, they take the twirly birds outside to see what happens in, with wind and how those are affected by wind after they've done them in the classroom. And then something that I forgot to include in this PowerPoint was the things that are also included to connect school to home. So they have homeschool connections, which are different activities that can be done at home. And for this particular investigation, there's four different activities that student, teachers could send home with the kids, that they could do with common materials or no materials. Some of the suggestions, so there's one here for zoomers. There's ones about motion in outdoor activities, so anything that they might be doing outside, looking for those patterns, making tops with common things found at home, and then creating spinning art. So some different things that they could do with their families to extend the learning of the science. And the final thing, which is what I think is a really great part of this program and what is in alignment with our standards and with the K-12 framework for science education, is that the engineering that is done is connected to the science learning that's done. They are not separate things. And so in the last investigation in this unit, the students are going to get to construct those carts. So they're going to go through that process of, first, having to figure out how do you make a two-axle system work? Because they will start by just trying to tape the two different axles to a index card. And it won't be until they sit it on the ramp and it doesn't move that they realize that something wasn't right. But then they go through the process of how can we make that work? What else do we need? They're going to investigate starting positions, so that's what one of these is. We're incorporating math. They're gathering data. At the third grade level, they don't talk about mean and median and mode yet. So they have to talk about other ways to, to evaluate data when you have multiple trials. And so that's what those sticky notes are along that meter tape on there, is ways to then make a claim based on the evidence of just where, where most of them are ending up. The final thing is that they get to do challenges. That's going to connect back to the very first investigation with magnets. So they're going to either have to pick something up, have something stop at a certain place, or something that goes the farthest. So they get some different options to do. Depending on time, they could do multiple things. But it brings that learning all the way back together. They're going to be able to then come back and try to answer their questions about the skateboard. Again, they're, they, they really want the kids to do the answering. It isn't about the teachers giving them the answers. So thank you very much for having me. I love teaching science, so I was glad to be able to do this and share it with you for the short amount that it was. But thank you for taking the time for this. And then if you have any questions.
Well, it was great. Thank you, really, thank you for, for taking the time. It's awesome. I remember finally being able to upgrade the science curriculum and how, just how excited we were when we were able to do that and even buy the FOS kits. I'm looking at Ellen because I think we're the only ones who are here to do that. And then to see the learning come to life. I mean, this is, this is such a great way for, especially young kids, to learn about science and engineering is to be able to, you know, get their hands in it and do it. And, I mean, we had a blast doing it and trying to figure it out. In case you couldn't tell. Some of us had more of a blast than others. Just saying. But, but no, but, I mean, but we, we really enjoyed it and enjoyed the learning and figuring out different ways to try to make it go and so on. So I mean, imagine what, what that's like for just a kid. I, it makes me, like, what's it like for a kid in third grade? Right, that's doing that, and to be able to add to it in the mag. It shows, it's really cool that for students to be able to learn in this way. Much better than, I didn't learn science this way, so much, much better. Much better. Dr. Nicolet?
Thank you, that, that was a lot of fun. And I can tell you love what you do. That's very evident. And I see these activities in schools when I visit. And I'm always mesmerized. I could stay in a classroom for a very long time and, and learn a lot along with the kiddos. I'd want to say two things, is this was an excellent example of, of, of how one small segment of what we do in our schools, in this case, science, is teaching children how to think, not what to think. And I will also tell you that in my most recent visits, I no longer see the FOS kits piled up high like Christmas gifts. They've all been dispersed and are being used. The last thing I want to say, because we hear a lot about quality of education from, from our community. And I will say that this is an excellent example of, again, one, one segment of our curriculum in Washoe County School District that exemplifies quality of education. And, and this is, this is stellar. Thank you very much.
Very, very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee Smith?
So I love all of this, but I'm going to have to admit that my favorite, and I hope we can keep it, is waterfall, waterfall.
Absolutely.
I'd like to invite her to our next board trainer.
I can bring more science. I can bring bugs, too.
Well, this was actually very good. Tracy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it. Fantastic, good job. Thank you. All right. Yeah, you guys are good. I'm separating you guys next time we have this thing. That's, we're going to make some changes. Right. Yeah, you guys get detention. Yeah, right. No, we heard you laughing from out there. All right. Continuing on, this is, this is all, all great stuff. All great stuff. 3.04. Presentation and discussion on the work occurring and future needs to prepare Washoe County School District staff and students for further success in the 21st century. Again, for information and discussion. And I'll just turn it back over to you, Dr. Parks, but I see you have, you have helpers.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Taylor. And again, good evening Superintendent McNeil and Board of Trustees, for the record, Troy Parks. I am super excited, not only about what we just gave to you today with FOS, but as you're well aware, we had an instance where our distance and blended learning department was created, and they've been doing exceptional work. And that is a huge part of our 21st century learning. So we wanted to bring to you today Jenny Anderson, who is our Director of Distance and Blended Learning, and Tara Graves, who is our Coordinator for 21st Century. And they, too, are going to connect our work to student learning and, believe it or not, 21st century skills. So with that, I'm going to go help clean up from our science experiment, and I'm going to turn it over to the very capable hands of Jenny. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. Good evening, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, Board of Trustees. I'm Jenny Anderson, for the record. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to introduce and reintroduce some of you to the work of 21st Century Learning Division, as well as show you where we're headed into the future. 21st Century Learning, hold on, I gotta remember to do this part. 21st Century Learning is currently made up of nine TOSSAs, one coordinator. They all come from a variety of classroom experiences and grade levels. The work they do services all schools and departments throughout our entire district. Oh, sorry, thank you so much for that. Our TOSSAs are our teacher, teachers on special assignment. So these are typically teachers who come from working within and have moved into these roles. So in 2011, there was a pilot program that was launched called Nevada Ready 21. This supported two middle schools with professional learning. It also introduced 21st Century Educator Badge Program. The division has continued to build and grow and support all of our schools and teachers in Washoe County, providing self-paced and instructor-led classes around online and blended learning, as well as best practices in classrooms. This team helped greatly as we were carrying out and beginning the initial pandemic shutdown and the adjustment to Microsoft Teams that we all underwent as a necessary daily teaching and communication tool. So as you can see, I've posted our mission statement up there. The focus of this team is to inspire educators and to optimize classroom learning environments in a way that prepares students for our current and future 21st century workforce. Now I'd like to introduce you to my friend and colleague Tara Graves. She's not only an expert in, for Washoe County, but she's also an expert contributing at the university, national, and international levels.
Thank you, Jenny. President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board. Tara Graves, for the record. These two frameworks guide the professional learning and the resources that we create. The one on the left may be very familiar to many of you. This is our 21st Century Competencies Guide, or we call it the Elevator Guide. It's used by teachers to increase student skills in these six dimensions, no matter what subject they teach. I'll give you a quick explanation of how this is used. For example, if I wanted to increase collaboration skills with my students, I would start at the bottom of the Collaboration Elevator with the first competency. Students are required to work in pairs or groups. Once my students have, have achieved that level of competency, I would gradually increase it by moving up that elevator so that eventually my learning activities would include the fact that student work is interdependent. And by interdependent, I mean, all the students are a part of the process of planning that final product of learning, and they all work together to achieve that common vision. On the right is our Nevada Academic Content Standards, which my department supports, which is computer science and integrated technology. And these are meant to be taught, not in isolation, but integrated with all core subjects. One of my favorite quotes. "Our job is not to prepare students for something. Our job is to help students prepare themselves for anything." While many of our students might go on to careers depicted in that image, a lot of our students will go on to careers that don't even exist as of today. For example, take a look at these two lists. In-demand jobs that didn't exist 10 years ago. And then jobs of the future for 2030. Some of these, I have no clue as to what they are. And that's kind of the point. We're not sure what we're preparing our students for anymore. But we are, our mission and the work that my team does is to help them, no matter what their future looks like. Another example, this is from the World Economic Forum, Skills That Are Needed in the Workforce. And you'll notice the words highlighted in blue come from that same 21st Century Competencies Guide. These are our six dimensions, highly correlated to the skills that are needed in the workforce. From that same report, one of the main philosophies of 21st century learning is that students are active learners, not passive. Which you all experienced some active learning just before us. Another huge part is creativity. So not just creativity in the arts, but creativity in problem solving. In the yellow are listed the focus areas of the Nevada Integrated Tech Standards, also highly correlated to our six dimensions. And in red, we have the, the skill sets that are underneath the Nevada Computer Science Standards, which will help our students build those top 15 skills listed above. Nevada is no longer just a gaming and entertainment state. We are a technology state. All of those companies on that slide are either headquartered here or have a huge presence in Nevada. And some of those are even partners in ed. So thank you very much to those companies. But really, we are looking for creating a situation where our students will be the ones that they look to to draw for their workforce. So it's more important that they learn the technology skills as well. Blended learning. So how do we, how do we help our students prepare themselves? Blended learning is a model I'm sure we've all heard of in the last couple of years, quite a bit. At its very basic definition, blended learning is when students are using technology at some point during the process of learning. Technology is not used as a substitute for the teacher. Technology is used as probably the teacher's biggest support system in creating that active learning experience for students. learning experience for students. The blended model has teachers purposefully designing learning in such a way so that students can access materials and their assignments that they need all in one place. Couple of examples of blended learning from one extreme to another. Excuse me. Students can be watching an instructional video created by their teacher and answering questions on a guided note taker or participating in online discussion, at the same time the teacher is helping students individually or in a small group. Students can pause and replay the video as often as they need in order to understand the concepts. This is an example of the flipped classroom, which is a subset of blended learning. Another example, during direct instruction, students can access additional individualized support through the technology, such as using Immersive Reader, which is a Microsoft tool, which is an accessibility tool that can translate text into a target language, or it could read text aloud, and it also has a picture dictionary. There's so many examples I can give you of what blended learning looks like in the classroom. And the courses that we provide and the resources we provide help teachers figure out which strategies and tools will work best for their students. Blended learning benefits all students. It helps them to learn anytime, anywhere, and to control the pace. Teachers can become more facilitators of learning rather than the sage on the stage. Students have more active control over their learning process. And students become proficient at using the technology and the processes that they will find later in college and career, no matter what that future looks like for them. So here's just a big picture of the work that we do. Jenny mentioned our 21st Century Educator Badge Program, and this is a set of nine classes that we offer that addresses pedagogy and technology, professional learning. The support and resources revolve around classroom ideas and technical how-to. We have onsite school support for our Leaders Network participants, and we work with our different departments across the district on developing online and blended professional learning, as well as using Microsoft Teams and Office 365. This is our course catalog here. We teach these courses every year. This diverse catalog helps us meet the needs of teachers around 21st Century Competencies, Blended Learning, and Effective Technology Use in the Classroom. And these are actual badges. So even adults like to get stickers. So this is the 21st Century adult version of a sticker. You may see these, a lot of teachers' email signatures. We have five badges, Explorer, Practitioner, Administrator, Practitioner, Leader, and Exemplar Classroom. The numbers next to each image represent how many teachers and administrators have earned these badges since 2011. Next, Jenny's going to talk to us about Leaders Network.
Thank you. Leaders Network is one of the programs we offer to all schools to build capacity around the Nevada Integrated Technology Standards and 21st Century Competencies, Microsoft Tools, and digital learning tools, and Blended Learning Essentials. This content is prepared and reviewed each month with school staff representatives and allows for adjustments to be made by each team. And that was really important. We wanted to be able to make sure that each school could decide what needed to be given out for their school and what was the right fit at that time. Now I'd like to wrap up by allowing you to watch a short video that will hopefully tie this all together for you. So, I don't know, JJ, can you play it? All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and highlight some of the important work that the 21st Century Learning Division is doing in Washoe County. We're available for any questions that you may have.
Well, let me just start with thank you. I mean, it's the first time I heard about 21st Century Learning when I first joined the board, and man, it has evolved so much since that time and during that time. And then COVID presented some very different challenges, and having you stepped in when you did to help balance all of that, all of a sudden, online and blended and synchronous and asynchronous and all of that stuff, just to get our arms around that. And now get to a place where you can really see how teachers can really benefit from learning these skills and really helping students. It's just very cool. It's just very cool to see the evolution of it, the evolution. So thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Dai, I saw you leaning in.
Yep. Yes, thank you. Another example of the quality of our education that we provide at Washoe County School District. I remember first learning about 21st century skills way back when I served for a career in tech ed at AACT. And what is this thing? What is this 21st century learning skills? And back to what President Taylor was saying, my gosh, the evolution has been wonderful. I know it's been, I don't want to say a slow go, but systematic, a systematic go of it. So can you just tell me what's on the horizon? What's next?
Thank you so much for the question, Trustee Nicolet. I think on the heart is, you know, the door is wide open. We've got to continue to move and evolve, and we've had lots of conversations around the importance of ensuring that our staff has understanding around these 21st century skills, because in order for students to be able to use these things in an effective manner, they've got to understand, you know, the staff has to understand how they're using these tools as well. So I think that would be our biggest next step and hurdle, is to help provide time for professional learning, for them to really engage in that. And I think that the opportunity the pandemic has brought us is that people have seen that there's a need for it, that they understand that it's not just, oh, we just take a computer and we set a kit up and they just do their thing, that we are seeing it so much more as an instructional tool that really enhances and engages students. So we want to just further take advantage of that, you know. We, Dr. Parks and I would talk about, like, the timing is now. Like, we are ripe for this, and we've got to take advantage of it and get great professional learning into the hands of our staff. The difficulty that we've been up against is that they're so overwhelmed. There are so many other things going on right now. While the time is now, your brain can only take so much at one time. So the time is still now. We're going to keep saying that until we can get this in place and really help our staff. But I have to say that the work that Tara and the 21st Century Team has done this year and the materials that they have put out are sustainable, so that while we may not have had as much opportunity for people to engage in it this year, we can use a lot of those materials in future years, and people can access them on demand so that they can continue to build their classrooms and get what they need to out there for their students.
Thank you. I think you're right about helping to build the capacity of teachers. It's great to give them all these tools, but if they don't know how to use them, and then maybe they don't have the comfort level in some cases, right? I didn't learn this when I was in school, and we didn't do this and all of that. But to then provide them some, I mean, we saw some teachers really do some amazing things because they had to go distance learning. When have you had asked if they wanted to? It would have been, no, no, no. But then they had, and we saw some teachers do, just really, really just go from, I don't want to, I don't want to, to, you know, being pretty darn good at it.
And if you don't mind me saying, I'm sorry. If you don't mind me saying, I think that they saw something in that distance learning. And what we want people to realize is what we did in distance learning is not what we're asking for in blended learning. Like, this is so much greater and more valuable than some of the attempts and maybe missteps that we had. And some people did a beautiful job during distance learning, but I would think, based on the role that I'm in, we've heard a lot of people who did not feel like that was the right approach, or that it was good for their students to the level of what we do in class. So taking the tools and the things that we've learned and be able to apply them in a blended learning environment, where maybe one of your rotations is really purposeful, well-thought-out technology usage, where students are researching, or they're engaging in teams, working on something together, like, that is really high-quality blended learning and 21st century learning, not a trying to replicate a full classroom, which, again, errors were made, and we did so much in that distance learning time that we were out of our schools.
Thank you, Jenny.
No, thank you, Jenny. What I wanted to add, and building on what Jenny said, is that I often ask myself that, like, as the chief academic officer, what is next for many of our things, including science, PLCs, you know, all these things come together for student learning. And I don't know about you as educators, but what I've noticed is sometimes we can get to looking at all that we do and thinking of them as separate things, separate focus, and we get to going, hey, we got to do more 21st century learning. No, no, we have to do more science. Well, I'm always trying to figure out, on the front end, how do we connect the work so that we're using 21st century learning skills for literacy, for mathematics, for real-world problem solving, so that it's not, oh, we got to do this something separate, but we need to integrate it into our English Language Arts. We need to integrate it into our mathematics, into our science. There's, integration is the only way we're going to get through all the many essential standards that we have, and when we're able to make those connections for teachers and students on the front end, where it all works together, it's not separate. That's kind of where I'm always trying to figure out, is how do we make it very clear that these systems integrate and make the learning stronger?
Thank you, Dr. Parks. Do you want to follow up?
I do. I want, you said that so perfectly that I was able to see what I see in schools, that very blended learning concept happening. And I see it across math, English Language Arts, science. And so I know that, much like PLCs, schools, teachers are in different stages, and that's just, that's the way it is. And we keep working on it. But just so you know, I mean, I know you know this, but now you know that I know. It's happening, and I see it. I see it every school I visit at different levels, elementary, middle, high school. I see it. I see it happening. And I see students having a ball. I see some students struggling. I see teachers that, my gosh, have they been doing this their whole life? Other teachers that are struggling. But what I see is people, students and educators alike, continuing to work on it, because my sense is, and in talking to teachers and students, they get what's going on. It makes sense to them, and they're enjoying it.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee Rodriguez?
I think this is great, and one thing I want to touch back, I can't remember who said it, but this is not to substitute or replace a teacher, it's to give them a tool. And, I mean, I see all the icons that you had on here. I mean, you drive down USA Parkway, and you're seeing it all right here in our own, like in the woods. And this is the future. It's 2022, and, you know, it's, we're moving, I mean, SpaceX, everything else, you know, and go Mission to Mars. I think this is great and very forward-looking, and I think this is awesome. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from?
Okay. I'll just say, super quick, you know, Jenny came into this role, we didn't really know what a distance learning person was going to be tasked with when we remember that. And she has just come into this role, and she has done a tremendous, tremendous job. And I can't say enough about Tara Graves. She is known nationally and internationally. She has an approach about her that if you don't understand technology, she's going to make it less scary for you as a student, myself. And she is just a wonderful, wonderful person, and her teachers and principals truly respect both of these young ladies. So thank you.
Well, we are blessed to have both of you, so thank you very much. All right. Actually, very cool. Yeah, okay. It is an all-electronic, okay? All right. All right, now we're moving on to agenda item 3.05. Discussion and Possible Action to Review and Provide Direction on Current COVID-19 Mitigation Measures in Effect for the 21-22 School Year, Including Facilities Management, Transportation, Staff and Student Exclusions, and Face Coverings for District Facilities and School Sites, Based on Current Federal, State, and Local Guidance. And of course, we can always take action on this should we choose. I'll turn it over to Dr. Lamarcas, who is here before us.
And I'll turn it over to Dr. McNeil.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
I'm like, I got two people. But she's okay. All right.
It's all good. So we'll just, here you have your guiding principles. And the last board action that the board took, JJ skipped by it, so we don't really need to see that, but it was back on, what was it, February 8th? And it was pretty much to continue what we were doing. And we have a little bit of a different recommendation today, but it actually replaces Directive 048 with 052. And Dr. Lamarcas will speak a little bit today in our presentation around the board plan that we'll be bringing to the board on March 8th, and we'll do some high-level bullet points on that.
Thank you, President Taylor, Dr. McNeil. For the record, Paul Lamarcas, Chief Strategies Officer, it's nice to see you all tonight. And I'm joined by Jen Crane. Here is our COVID meter. We're going to run very quickly through a little bit of data. Today, we still remain in the orange region, but we have dropped a point. We're at 8.0, whereas when we put this together, we were at 9. The cases that are depicted at the Nevada Dashboard continue to drop on a weekly basis. This is a good sign. Our ongoing case per 100,000 trend, our cases are way down. We are below where we were in August, which is very good news, and it continues to go down. This was developed last Friday. We ran the numbers again this morning. We continue to tick down, so those are very positive signs. Test positivity is still very high, but again, today it was down to 19.5, which puts us back where we were in the surge in the middle of fall. So hopefully that will continue to trend downward. As Dr. McNeil noted, and as you are well aware, there is now a new Directive 052. It essentially eliminates Sections 2 through 5 of Directive 048, and Section 6, which was the testing section, that is essentially finished on February 27th, when we go into spring sports. There are different elements of 052, and there is a point of emphasis that seems, it's being emphasized by DHH, the Department of Health and Human Services. It's being emphasized, I think, by the Nevada Department of Education. That is, if there is an outbreak in a school, the Washoe County Health District, within our jurisdiction, will have the ability to require us to do certain things regardless of what our plan might look like. So they could mandate masks, they could do any number of things. So they could mandate masks, they could do any number of things if they deem that there's a health emergency outbreak within a school. Uh, we don't foresee something of that nature happening. As Dr. McNeil reported to you, I, I think two meetings ago, we haven't had a closure. We haven't had, um, the kind of an outbreak that the guidance is very worried about. But it is important to know that they, they can sort of dictate what occurs in a most extreme situation. We wanted to give you a sense of just some of the current things that are occurring. Uh, and then Jen's going to talk a little bit about the, the plan that, that is emerging. And we are going to want to make sure you have time to, to, to give us any questions you want us to ask the Washoe County Health District, so we're optimally prepared for you on March 8th. So we know that the face mask mandate went away, um, and it's optional. And, and it's been strongly encouraged that people who want to wear masks should wear masks and they should feel comfortable wearing masks. And in many settings, many people are choosing to do that. In other settings, they're choosing not to, and that's okay. We do want to, to make sure that, that we all remember that, uh, we still have to follow CDC guidelines and Washoe County Health District guidelines, state guidelines, when it comes to, uh, someone being ill, uh, or someone who's been a close contact. So as you know, we've reduced exclusion or isolation quarantine periods from 10 days to five days. But if a child were to return to school after being sick for five days or being out for five days, days six through 10, they have to wear a mask. Now, they can choose to remain, uh, at home and, and we can provide digital learning, uh, in that, you know, during that time period. But as they come back, it's, it's required that they wear face masks. That's also true for the close contact who never has to leave. So a, a student who's vaccinated, symptom free, but we know that they're a close contact and they've been contacted by the health district during the incubation period, the 10-day period essentially, um, they have to wear face masks. The only other point to make is we continue all of our layered mitigation strategies. We're, we're encouraging and using self-screeners every day. Hand washing is occurring every day, multiple times. It's being encouraged. We social distance when we can. Face masks can be worn, should be worn, uh, as people feel comfortable with that. Uh, and so now I'm going to turn it over to Jen and she's going to talk a little bit about the emerging plan.
Thank you. Um, our emerging plan, we got direction from the Health Department. Many of what Dr. Lamarca talked about before as far as masking, those that have been asked to isolate or quarantine is to stay the same. We are, we will be contact tracing in the classroom, so we don't have entire classrooms or entire schools masking. So the contact tracing will be one of our mitigating, um, factors we will be using. The other part of our mitigating factors would be also, um, that, um, we would also have a regular testing program. It's not going to change any different than it is now. So those students that are going outside of the county for athletics will be tested to go outside the county. We will not be doing weekly testing, but we will be encouraging anybody who is sick and maybe symptomatic to go and get tested. We will not be providing any testing through the district because we found that it's not being used as much as it has been used in the past. The other, um, method that the Health Department gave us, they gave us a list of factors we can choose from in order to do for, um, mitigating an outbreak or to do while we are designated on an outbreak. And you might ask, what is an outbreak? And the governor sent out that we would have to decide that. Well, our Health Department decided that for us. So how they're going to determine an outbreak is 10% of the school population. That means staff and students who are out sick with COVID-like symptoms or they've tested a positive. The second determinant or the other determinant they will use is three positive in a cohort. So to give you an example, secondary schools were, will most likely be using the 10% factor, whereas the elementary schools will be using probably both 10% of the whole school population or three positive cases in a classroom, because that is a cohort. We have some of that going on right now. Some of the classrooms have been put on outbreak, but not entire elementary schools, just those specific classrooms have. How does the classroom get off of outbreak? They have to have two consecutive incubation periods with no positives.
I'm sorry, can, what does, what does that, can you help us understand what that means? Two consecutive?
So two incubation periods. So the incubation period of COVID-19 is the 14 days. So two consecutive incubation period is a total of 28 days. So anytime within that 28 days, if a child pops up positive, your 28 days start over again. So that's where, um, on the masking part, we will be doing contact tracing. Because if a classroom goes on outbreak or a school goes on outbreak, the entire school may never get off of outbreak and they will be masked the entire year. So that's why we have to go back to contact tracing.
So that we can help to, to limit that, so you don't have a whole school walking around with a mask again and so on. So I'm with the, I'm, Ms. Crane, if I may, let me kind of repeat back to you what I think I'm understanding, because I may not be getting it.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, um, what puts us, so to speak, this is according to the Health District, because they decided, right? Um, if a school, um, um, or a classroom even gets on outbreak status, that would be three positive sta, uh, cases in a classroom, because they're considered a cohort.
Right.
Okay, I understand why it would be much harder to do that with middle school or high school, because they move around so much.
Right.
Right, so in elementary school, they don't have that kind of mobility, so they stay in their classroom. So, so if we have three positive cases, let's say in a classroom. Okay, and then that classroom was on outbreak status.
Right.
And if they're on outbreak status, what does that mean?
If they're on outbreak status, then currently with the plan we currently have, the kids that are in the classroom, if they are sick and we have a presumptive positive and they come back after the five days, that student will be required to wear a mask.
Right, right.
If we have a direct positive, we will contact trace. And any students that were within six feet of that student.
In direct contact.
Will have, will be excluded until day five if they are unvaccinated and they will come back with a mask on, from day six through 10. On day 11, the mask comes off.
Okay.
If the student is vaccinated, they will have, um, they will need to be masked for, until day 11.
Okay, okay.
And the other things we are doing is again reinforcing the hand washing, doing any extra cleaning that could be done, um, distancing when possible, et cetera. Our HVAC system is also part of the, um.
Mitigation?
Mitigation factors that we already have in place. Again, many of the mitigation factors are already in place, so we're just keeping, doing what we're doing.
Okay, I, I, I started getting concerned when you said outbreak status and I was like, oh man, everyone's going to have to, we're going to have to close the school, everyone's going to have to work. I understand it's, it's, I understand. Thank you very much.
I, I will let you know already, we have classrooms within the district. Which are already on outbreak and we have not closed.
Right, no, I understand. Thank you. I was freaking out over nothing, so it's okay. It was an internal freakout.
Okay.
It's okay. Please, go ahead, thank you.
So, um, and these are some of the things we're doing already. Um, as I said, we will go back to contact tracing and we are doing that right now as part of a mitigating factor we're using. Exposure notification, we will only be notifying the students that we will be, um, asking to wear masks and explaining that. We've already talked about the protocols for quarantine and isolation. We've talked about the mask and that. One of the ones, um, it did say is vaccinations. That's one of the mitigating factors that we're using, is that we are encouraging it and we're in the different various, um, information we send out to parents, our weekly newsletters and that. We will be putting in where different COVID vaccine clinics, um, are being held as part of our, um, mitigating factors.
Okay.
Let me add, we've met with the Washoe County Health District several times already. These are specific things that will be articulated in the plan that will come to you on March 8th. And so one of the questions we have for you is, uh, is there anything else, um, that you want us to work with the Washoe County Health District to address? We think it's pretty comprehensive. It addresses all of the elements that are required through Department of Health and Human Services in terms of plan elements. But we wanted this opportunity, if there's something specific you wanted the Washoe County Health District to consider, um, so that when we come to you on the 8th, we're prepared.
And if I may just add real quickly, so what we'd like to be able to do is to bring the plan that's already been signed off by the Health District to the board on the 8th. And then the board's going to review that. And then as soon as the board reviews, um, then we would send that to the Nevada Department of Education. However, the Nevada Department of Education does not approve our plan, the Washoe County Health District has to approve our plan.
Sure, before we go further, yeah, sure, let's have public comment, then we can bring it back here for questions and comments as well.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Duran.
Hello, um, so. So not many week ago, um, that, that, that the governor decided to end the mask mandate, versus her mask mandate today and then Washoe County School should follow suit, same as Park County School Districts. So I think, uh, I think that we should not come, like, keep a max, and should not, like, create a mask mandate unless it's a major emergency, like there was a public health crisis or there was, uh, COVID, it was create a new variant. So I think that we should get rid of mask mandate, leave it at, as it is. And, uh, I do know, I do, I do know you guys did a good job for protected students. As a protective, so for student, that some parent might disagree with you. I know it might be difficult for parents who doesn't want to wear a mask at school because that affect their healthy life, that affect their business fairytale, business delay. And I, and I do know that take out the mask mandate by February due to COVID or trophy, it, it's a wide decision for that. I do know CD said like, that too early to call, but I think, uh, I think the February now is the time for mask mandate of March, but I follow in March, so check out, so like, get rid of mask mandate by, no, no later than March 31st. So, uh, government says that did it months earlier. So there was couple state fittings there are, are in mask mandate and rural majority of state have no mask mandate. So I think that if you want to make the parents happy, I think, uh, with no mask mandate, mask optional for student and a vaccine option for student who want to take the vaccine, you had ask a parent for 18-year old permission. I do know California legislature, uh, proposed a bill that 12, up to 12 to 17, don't have to tell parents about that. But, hey, we live in Nevada, so we have to tell parents on before, under 18 to get a vaccine. And I do know, I do know the immigration, I think that we should keep immigration 6 to 10, we for unvaccinated, uh, wear mask. And then after 10, now you don't have to wear a mask. If you don't want to take vaccine, that's fine. So I think that we could not, like, have a vaccine passport or mask, vaccine, mask day, or mask ma, mask mandate. And, uh, we might, we want to make, uh, parents happy.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
No, sir, you're welcome.
That's all I have for this item.
Okay, thank you very much, JJ. Okay, let's bring it back, bring it back here, uh, for, uh, conversations, what, what staff is asking us for, just as a quick reminder, we know that the plan, they'll be bringing back to us to review, approve, you know, the, the request is to approve it on, on, uh, March 8th. And then it follows the route that the superintendent shared with us. And so what, what staff is asking for now, uh, Dr. Lamarca is asking for, that we share with, with him, with them, right? Um, what questions we might have of the Health District, uh, during this time, so they can come back with responses, um, responses to those. So I'll have, I have a couple, but I see my colleagues, we're going to go to trustee Church and then trustee Mayberry.
Thank you very much. I missed part of it, but I'm pretty sure I got most of it. And I understand there may be times when the Health District would require masks. I, I think I caught that. Just for the record, my personal view, I would like to see no mask mandate to the maximum degree legally possible. And that said, I do want to be sensitive to some of the emails I've received. If you have at-risk kids, and I don't know if I missed it, but what do we do? Um, if there are kids that are literally at risk, or teachers, um, or staff, how do we accommodate that, um, since they're now going to be in the mask-free environment?
Thank you for the comments, Mr. Church. Yes, uh, we too, we, we, masks will be optional unless we are told specifically by the Washoe County Health District that they can't, they have to be used, with the exception of the quarantine and isolation periods, which we addressed. Uh, we're strongly encouraging people to wear masks. It's, it's okay to wear masks in the school. And so we would strongly encourage a family that has a child who is at risk to continue to wear masks, same with staff. Um, I work in a different office area over at Riggins Court and we have a mixture of folks who are wearing masks and folks that aren't, and it is okay to wear a mask. I choose to wear a mask in certain environments and I don't choose to wear them in others. I would wear one in this environment, except I, I find it difficult to communicate when I have one on, so I'm taking a risk when I do that. Uh, but we don't want anyone to feel as if just because perhaps the majority of folks aren't wearing masks, uh, that they can't or they shouldn't.
Is there any talk of some type of distance learning for those really at risk? Cause, I mean, in my opinion, masks are ineffective. So is there any talk of that?
Well, as you know, we do have North Star, which is a virtual high school. Um, we do have some options, uh, through, um, a couple of our campuses where we can use the Ingenuity Program to support distance learning, especially if they're sort of an acute situation. Uh, it is something that the board certainly could consider in the future is a more robust digital learning platform. But we do try to support children, uh, when they're excluded, uh, through distance learning and we can do that on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, trustee Church. Superintendent?
And I, I can appreciate that point. I would just offer that I think, um, you know, we need to be really careful about providing FAPE, uh, free and appropriate education by law. And I think that has to be, um, something that we can work out with the family and that the parents have input on what that would look like for their learner. Because if you have an, uh, an immune compromised child, the parent may actually want that child to be in the classroom as well with the other, with the other students. And so it's just how are we going to be able to, to manage that within the classroom?
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Trustee Mayberry and trustee Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I was, uh, going to make a motion if I can, since you want to have a comment to make.
Okay, you have, you have a comment question first?
Yeah, just a quick, a quick question, which I hope it is. Uh, can I just get a quick recap? Um, I might miss this. Uh, as far as COVID testing and our athletics, um, students, are we still mandated to do that?
Um, as of the 26th, we are no longer, um, going to be testing all of our athletes. We are going to be testing those that are going outside of the county to other counties. And that also, it will also include field trips that are going outside of the county we will be doing, or any venues inside the county that require testing.
Okay. And that's what's left of the mandate as of right now, is out of the county testing is mandated still?
Outside of the county is not the mandate. We had to come up with a testing, um, portion for our, our plan for the Health Department. And so there were different options that were available and, and that one was the easiest one to do, um, because they're going outside of the county versus trying to figure out who within the school district we were going to test and. out who within the school district we were going to test, and permissions, test to stay, all of that kind of thing. We kept what we kind of had in place already.
The lesser?
Yes.
But if I can, let me elaborate. We have talked with the Washoe County Health District about minimizing testing. So, it actually was part of 048 that for participants in non-high-contact sports, if they left the county and/or persons that were performing, that they would have to be tested. And so, until there's a different plan approved, we have to continue. Last week, we had some performances at the Pioneer Theater in town. I believe our plan will still require testing when we participate in any venue that requires testing. But, but actually testing kids when they leave the county remains to be seen. The Washoe County Health District may allow us to minimize the need to do that, but we'll bring that back to you on March 8th.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. My question for, in terms of what to ask the Health District, and then I see Dr. Nicolet, and we'll certainly go for the motion, is, is what might, I know they have the authority, so to speak, to, not so to speak, they have the authority of, if we, if they think that, you know, transmission's high or something like that, and they can say, hey, they want to change the protocols, we know that's, we made it clear, it's not on us, it's on them. Just, are there any benchmarks, anything, is there anything that they're looking for that might prompt that shift? If there, if there any, I don't know if they're, if they're data points or anything like that, just if there's anything that may, may be an indication, an indicator for them. Okay? Thank you.
Such as test positivity?
Yeah, maybe test positivity, maybe whatever, right? Thank you. Dr. Nicolet?
Thank you, that, that was one of my thoughts as well. Getting back to athletics, spring athletics, students coming here, track meet, they have, they will test in, in their school, in their county before they come to compete here?
That all depends on what their plan they put forth to their Health Department.
And that leads me to a big discomfort, is the inconsistencies. So, Washoe County Health District will make decisions on our plan that, that we painstakingly put together. Who makes the decision for Lyon County and for, for all the other counties so that there's consistency for our kids? And that, and then I want to say this too, because I know you want to address it, and I know you're familiar with, with my thinking. I think contact tracing is a waste. I think it's a waste of time, I think it's a waste of money, I worry about the time that people are spending when they could be doing something else. You know, prove me wrong, I'm okay with that. So, so the inconsistency with Health Department decisions and then contact tracing.
So, the governor asked that each school district put their plan forth to their Health Department. In there, each school district has, at least has to have some testing going on, be it test to stay, be it their athletes, they come up what they want, what they want their plan to be. Currently, we test our athletes when they go, we've been doing it weekly for close-contact sports. We've been doing it for any sports that go out of the county. So, part of our plan may be that we continue to test our athletes as they go out of county. And we test any other field trip or activity that goes outside the county, to make sure that we're sending healthy individuals outside that county. The other part is that, as Dr. Lamarcas said, we're testing if there's any venues within the county that we have students going to field trips. We will be testing them. We have to give the Health Department our testing options. So, I can't say what other school districts are going to do.
I get that, I guess I just needed to hear it again, because it's, there's just such an inconsistency for me, and I do, I do understand this kind of rock and hard spot thing. Getting back to my belief, which is, I think feeble at best, the contact tracing and a waste of time, talk me off that ledge if you would.
So, contact tracing is one of the mitigating factors that we have been given as a choice by the Health District in, in what we're going to do if we were going to be put on a, on an outbreak. The Board of Trustees, if I believe correctly, you want to have the least amount of students in masks while participating at school. In order to do that, we have to contact trace. Instead of saying, if there is a positive in an elementary school, then the entire classroom gets masked for the, for the 10 days, and on day 11, they all remove it. So, you have a classroom of 30 students, all 30 of them are going to be in masks, or we contact trace, and the students that are within six feet of the positive student will be the ones in masks.
I get that, and you did such an excellent job of describing that, and I mean that sincerely. And I still struggle with the craziness of the whole thing. I just, I have a hard time wrapping my mind around the contact tracing making any difference other than to aid to data collection.
I don't know if that can be resolved. I mean, it sounds like that was back to, there are some options the Health District gave us, and that was an option that was selected by our team in alignment with what you've learned to be the, the pleasure of the Board. So, that's, that's what I get. So, it's, there's no magic solution to contact tracing, so thank you, Ms. Crane, I know.
No, there isn't any magic solution, and, you know, it's, it's like six, pick six of these options, so we were trying to pick the six of the lesser evils in that, so.
I mean, it sounds like staff, I mean, you picked the ones that were most in alignment with where you knew the direction of the, of the Board was, that would allow our students to, to be in class and participate as freely as they possibly can. But at the same time, there's a level of safety for those that need that, so I certainly understand that.
And, and I do too. I, I want to reference, and I, I ask this question again, it's the, and thank you for this information, it's the February 16th Teams Conference Call, we get that COVID-19 Team Meeting information, which is pretty cool, it's only down to one page now, which is a big change. But it does, it says, "Contact tracing will need to be reintroduced in the schools." So, does that mean Diane, teacher of the first grade is now going to, how does that look? Thank you.
So, in the past, contact tracing, we would get seating charts from the teachers. So, what the teachers need to do is make sure that whatever they're handing in to their principal and school nurses is the most accurate seating chart and most up-to-date seating chart that they have. And then, there will be basically a six-foot circle drawn around the positive student or positive person in determining who needs to be notified that they, A, were in close contact. And in that, they will need to mask, B, if they're in close contact and not vaccinated, then they need to go home for their quarantine period and can return after five days.
Well, I don't like it, but I get it, and I appreciate your work on this, and your explanation is, is, I understand it.
Here's, here's something to also think about. If we weren't to take that as one of the factors, if a school or a classroom were to go on outbreak, remember, it's 28 consecutive days with no positive. We could have that classroom in masks the entire rest of the year, if we did not contact trace, or the entire school if we did to the 10, if, if it is determined that the 10% is, so that's.
I certainly understand, I certainly understand. Student trustee Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. When it comes to the outbreaks, how is the outbreak affecting sports? How is, when, like football season was, if one person got COVID, like student, the whole team couldn't practice, is the outbreak's affecting sports in any way?
So, if a team were to come back and they were to have three people who are positive, then we would have to put that whole team on outbreak, and that would affect their practicing, yes. Because that is a cohort in and of itself. Thank you.
Thank you, good question. Trustee Church, and then we're, then we're going to.
I'll try to make it quick. Ditto, ditto on the contact tracing and the testing, I'm no fan, but I got it. Quick question. When we say the Washoe County Health District, does that mean it has to go back to their Board when they meet, or is that just one individual? And I'm hearing already, I don't like that.
I believe it's going back to one individual, and, and she'll stamp it or not.
I can't say I'm comfortable with that, but, okay.
Okay.
It would be approved by the Washoe County Health District Officer, the Chief Officer. We have a primary contact who you've met before, Heather Kerwin, she's their chief epidemiologist, but it's an agency approval, it doesn't go to the Washoe County Board. I, I, I need to say it, just because I have to say it. So, cases are way down, it was impossible to contact trace when cases were way up high. As Jen did say, one, we don't have a choice on notification, so we can either notify a few or a lot. But I'd also draw your attention to the comment both of you guys made about kids who might be vulnerable. So, if I am a parent of a vulnerable child in a class, I sure hope that you're doing everything you can to let me know if my kid has been in contact. And so, a general notification to the whole class doesn't really help, but a more precise contact tracing study might.
I, I think it's just looking at the whole piece of it, right, and, and so on, but we're, we're making great progress, we're moving along, numbers have been down, we haven't had an outbreak in the school. I mean, there are a lot of positives in this and where we're going, and not the most convenient, nothing's going to be the most convenient till we get back to not having to do anything. But, but we're not there yet, so there's some things we're going to have to do as they make, that's, that's what I get from this thing, so. Madam Superintendent, and then trustee Mayberry, are you still ready for a motion?
So, just super, I just want to make it clear to trustee Church's point, what we would like to bring to the Board is a plan that the Washoe County Health District has already signed off, so that when you receive that plan on March 8th, we know, because we've been working with them, that that plan would be approved by the Washoe County Health District. That's what we would like. And in fact, I think Dr. Lamarcas has invited a couple of the representatives, I don't know if they'll be here on the March 8th, but I know that we have invited them, in case you all had any questions for them.
Okay, so, so the, thank you, Madam Superintendent, and thank you, Ms. Crane and Dr. Lamarcas. Looks like the motion before us is what you see there on the Board, that we continue, the Director Superintendent to continue to work with the Washoe Health District to develop the mitigation plan, to be submitted to the Board on March 8th, 2022, that's what's before us. Trustee Mayberry?
Yeah, you said it very eloquently, I'm so moved.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
And thank you very much, I'm very comfortable and confident with the direction that we're going, thank you.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by, we'll take Dr. Nicolet. No further discussion, we already got a public comment. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion is carried, let the record show it is unanimous, and this is, as we know, the part of Governor's Directive.
052.
052. So, we're no longer in Governor's Directive 048, we're in, which requires masks, we're in Governor's Directive 052, which requires the plan. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, then we're, our board reports, okay, we're wanting to start with our student trustee, Ms. Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. Currently, we are meeting with more students, we've gotten more student input in our meetings recently, so we're very excited about that. We're, the main topics from last meeting were about the bus transportation and the change within those, and the mask updates. Students had a lot of thoughts, and we're talking a lot about what they saw in their schools, and there was a lot of differences between different high schools, so it was very interesting. Student Voice is currently starting a research project with some national researchers that are working with different schools throughout the school district, so it's been very, they're going to, those researchers are going to come out to Reno and start their research projects, so it's going to be very interesting on what kind of information they can gain from Student Voice, and how students speak about their schools and what they learn inside their schools. We're also working with the Superintendent Search Council, and going to focus groups with them, and being able to talk to them about what we want in our next superintendent, and what we would like to see. And our next Student Voice meeting is March 2nd at Dilworth Middle School, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We're trying to get more students to come in person, but we're, we still have the virtual options, and if anyone would like to join us, you can always email us at sac@washoschools.net. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam President, I'll be short. I did, I haven't had any school visits scheduled, we're on the calendar here, I think, in the next few weeks, but I did have an opportunity to attend the job fair at Worcester High a few weeks ago, and I was very impressed, it was a, I think, a modest turnout, but I was really impressed with how our H R department and the team came together, and they had the various tables and, and different functions and services, you know, opened up and, and encouraging people to stop by and visit, so it's, it's encouraging to see that there's some folks that are, are looking for work here. So, thank you very much, Madam Superintendent, for, for continuing to go down that path. And also know, we've, we've gotten some emails from folks inquiring about the air guard, National Guard driving our buses, and I think we made that request, and it was denied, so I wanted to make sure that was on the record. We're doing everything we can in, in that regard. So, it's my short report, thank you all very much, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, trustee Mayberry, Dr. Nicolet?
Oh, good, I'll take your two minutes.
No, J.J., start the clock, that tells me, start the clock.
I shouldn't have said any, okay, no, don't even.
No, you can't, no yielding.
Okay, I'm taking a little different approach with school visits, you know, I love to go to schools and I brag on them, but I'm going to do something a little different, this is about namesakes. So, Bernice Martin Matthews, Matthews Elementary School, Bernice Martin Matthews, former Reno City Councilwoman, Nevada State Senator, 1994 to 2010. She was also the Director of Nursing and Health Sciences at TMCC. So, Matthews Elementary School is represented by a fabulous, fabulous woman of color. Silver Lake Elementary School, this was a little harder, because Silver Lake, it's not a person, this was tough. But what I, what I found out was that Silver Lake is part of the Pacific Inland Flyway, Amarch Playa, and Uplands, and are home to dozens of bird species, northern flicker, and fish such as trout. Silver Lake is now protected as an open space and facilitated by the Nevada Land Trust with many generous donations such as the Echeveria and Lear Trusts. So, it's known as an open space. So, Silver Lake Elementary School is open space for, for kiddos. Alice Smith Elementary School, Alice Smith has a wonderful, beautiful history along with her husband Al, but she was one of Nevada's early rights advocates and humanitarians. Together, Alice and her husband Al founded the Reno Sparks Branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People in 1995, and they were also instrumental in founding the Robert H. Brooks Post of the American Legion for Black Veterans. One of her quotes, "Let's not throw away our lives, let's do something constructive. I want to climb up a little bit and maybe take someone with me." Alice Smith, another beautiful woman of color. Elizabeth Lenz, the Lenz family, if you've been around here long enough, you know that they make beautiful music. So, anyway, Elizabeth Lenz, she served as a Washoe County trustee for 14 years, what a brave woman she was. First woman, first woman chairwoman of the Regional Planning Commission, and first woman to be appointed chairwoman of the Washoe County Board of Equalization. She bought musical instruments and brought musical performances to area schools, and she herself has seven talented musicians in the family. Last, but certainly not least, Marvin Piccolo.
All right, you're running over, I don't let you slide.
Stop, stop, please, J.J., just for me, stop the clock. Marvin Piccolo, pre-K through 12, is one of our special education programs. Absolutely fabulous, fabulous school that's doing wonderful things with students. Marvin Piccolo was a Superintendent of Washoe County School District from 1966 to 1980, and previously Director. and previously Director of Special Education. He's nationally known as a pioneer for being an advocate for special education programs. And just a nod to Piccolo and some of the wonderful things they are doing. They have implemented PLCs, Professional Learning Communities, are incorporating essential standards and doing common assessments, all through a program that's called attainment. And one of the really cool things, guys, is they have this PAES lab and it's for career training and basic generalization and vocational life skills training. So they are doing absolutely wonderful things for their students.
Thank you for your, Dr. Nicolet.
And very quickly, I know you don't know this acronym. PAES stands for Practical Assessment Exploration System. I won't say anything next time.
Okay, you get two minutes next time. Okay, let's move on. Clerk, Clerk Minetto.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the honor of going with all of my fellow trustees to Equity and Diversity Training. I went to Dilworth with our superintendent and had a really nice visit there. And then I went to Whitehead. And it was interesting because at Dilworth, I saw a lot of kids who still had their mask on, which is great. And then I go to Whitehead with the little guys and I didn't see hardly any children with mask on. And then I had board training yesterday. We all had board training yesterday. And I had a real honor. I had Palmer, the music teacher at, well, a teacher at Palmer, where I taught all those years, get me and said, "We can't find your school song." And I said, "Oh, it's in the file cabinet," whatever. And of course, they couldn't find it. So they invited me to come out. And so I came out and I got a, she gave me a piece of staff paper. And having sung it for 20 years, and I wrote this song, by the way, words and music. I, can you pull it up? My chicken scratching? Do you have it? No? Okay.
I sent it to you.
That's okay. It doesn't matter.
Bring it on your next report.
Oh, well, no, we don't have to do that. It's gonna be in the, there.
The display cap, the display case?
With Virginia Palmer. And her granddaughter is a music teacher who I taught with for years. And so I'm forever hopeful she'll appreciate it.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you, Clerk Minetto. Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. It's been a busy couple of weeks. A lot of it's been training and training. So I was able to make a school visit this last couple of weeks, but I do have one come up here soon of a Sparks Council member. I'm really excited with that. And hopefully I can squeeze in one more next week. I know Colleen's gonna be scrambling. And I'm excited to announce that we are gonna be having a, well, I and a couple of trustees will be having a town hall soon. When I say soon, like in the March, beginning of April. So I'm really excited for that, just reopen that door again. And again, that's why I encourage you, members of the public, if you want to get ahold of me, have coffee, whatnot, please email me and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Smith?
Thank you so much, President Taylor. So I'd like to start off by congratulating Tracy Chicaloni of Reno High School. She was named Teacher of the Year by the Voice of Democracy and Veterans Affairs. And also from Reno High School, Mr. James Gillian received the Junior ROTC Outstanding Instructor Award. So very, very proud of them. I also met with Michael Brazier. He's the CEO and President of United Way of Northern Nevada and the Sierra. And I learned all about the important work that they're doing in the community and the district, especially with the focus on early childhood literacy. I attended the first full day of Equity and Diversity Training with the entire board last week and then also the full day of board training yesterday. So a couple of school visits to report on. The first is Mount Rose K through 8 Academy of Languages, which is led by Principal Chrissy Brown. And oh my gosh, is there so much to report on this amazing school. So Mount Rose, this is the only public non-charter K through 8 in the Washoe County School District. And they're really leading the way in two-way immersion, which is also called TUI, I learned in Spanish. So a little bit of history here. I knew that Jesse Beck Elementary School also has a TUI program there. And Chrissy Brown actually started that. And then she brought that over to Mount Rose Academy of Languages as well. And, and this program doesn't just help students learning Spanish. It's also proven to help English language learners excel in their own development. So you really see that two-way benefit, which I thought was fantastic. And something that we really need to spotlight is that all of their eighth graders in that two-way immersion program take the AP Spanish exam and earn college credit in the eighth grade. I'm telling you, so much good stuff there. So I also visited Hunter Lake Elementary School with Principal Amanda McWilliams. She's been there for almost 10 years. She came onto the school when it was a three-star school. And within a few years, she brought it up to a five-star school along with her whole Dragons team and earned the National Blue Ribbon School Distinction in the 2019, 2020 school year. And I saw myself how this happened because we were in a classroom and I noticed all the learners seemed little, but they were writing all these sentences and reading all these sentences. And I thought, well, they look really young, but is this second grade? Is this third? Nope, this was first grade. And she explained to me how they layer their goals from first to second to third and up so that they are reading and writing full paragraphs much earlier than I even realized kids were doing that. It was phenomenal. I'm gonna close by saying something which might be controversial, but I feel like it should be said. And that is that Hunter Lake Elementary might have the cutest mascot in all of Washoe County. They are the Dragons. So you've got fire, you've got flying, treasure, the whole nine yards. I just don't know how you top that. So there you go.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Trustee Church, there was no controversy there. Trustee Church?
You made me nervous. You made me nervous. Thank you. Those that know me know that I think the media's the fourth branch of government. And so I appreciate everything the media does. Just want to head something off of the pass and correct a couple of news headlines. Number one, there was a headline that said that the board last week, and it's been a very, very busy last week and a half, that we approved a complaint process. I want to correct that or make sure there's no misunderstanding. We approved a draft complaint process. I voted yes. But that is only because it gets sent to the public, to you folks for review. Then it comes back to the board in an open public meeting for approval or non or whatever. In that, there was a section about making complaints 100% confidential to the maximum degree possible. That's not my personal philosophy. So I voted yes to send it to public comment, plus that conflicts with two other policies that you can't have two that say confidential and one that says not. So I wanted to clarify that and all the different emails and comments I received. And then I just want to head off tonight to make clear that we voted to approve the template contract for the superintendent. And that included discussion of how much they would be paid on the buyout. It doesn't mean that I voted to approve a year buyout. It's a template. And that would never, that would come back to the board at some future point. So I'm just heading that one off to the pass. And then there was another quote in the media, quote, "The removing of the optional first comment," referring to public comment, "was so our meetings don't get derailed until late in the evening. It was a decision we made and it is supported by the board. Stop the cards and letters." I never supported that. I'm a favor of having public comment at the beginning and I'm not aware of any board vote that approved that. So that's, if there is, I'm not aware of it, but I'm not in favor of it. Stop the cards and letters. And then moving on to a better topic, yes, town hall tentative, tentative. So we'll let communications put out the official word once it's official. But ours for District A, which is me, E and G, tentatively Trainer Middle School, Wednesday, April 13th, roughly 5:30, 6:00 in the evening to start. I'm gonna see if I can reach into my budget to get some pretty decent snacks. You know, my idea is Costco hot dogs and soda, but whatever we can get to make you want to come and, and meet with us. So again, that's just tentative, but April 13th, towards the evening, 5:30, 6 o'clock. And I'll try and see if I can spring for some decent snacks. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. My district is on there too. So thank you for using your budget to buy snacks for our constituents. Actually, there will be three town halls. Many of us wanted to have them, so we're gonna, we're having them coordinated so we can do them together instead of having everybody come out a million different times. So be looking for those. There'll be three of them already scheduled. There'll be, they'll be, we're just locking down the details, staff is. And we'll make sure and get them out. Come on out. Come on out and be a part of the town halls. Okay, quick things, let's see. Speaking of transportation and Governor using the, the Air National Guard, the Governor had, in honor of Black History Month, happy Black History Month, everybody, by the way. In honor of Black History Month, he had some, just a round table with some African Americans from the community. And he asked, the last question he asked each of us, "Is there anything I can do for you?" Well, I asked him to help us with transportation. I, I went around a little bit and found a way to connect it to Black History Month, but I had to get it out there because I had the Governor asking me what he could do. So we didn't do much, but at least I put it out there for him to consider. We talked about the, the trainings that we've had. Thank you, everybody, for taking the time to do it. And I thought they were good trainings. I went to Hug High School's, the last basketball game in that gym, in that gym for the Hug High School Hawks. So there were many of us old school people that just went back to be there because it was the last game, just to say goodbye and kind of one more time, you know, for the school on the hill. You have to go to Hug to get that. So anyway, let's see, let's see, had an executive committee meeting with the, the State School Board Association Executive Team, media briefing. And if I did mention this last time, we lost a, a, a member of the Washoe County School District family who had been fighting cancer, Jocelyn Jones, a longtime fight. She was a, a coach, a softball coach at Spanish Springs High School. And we intersected, she, hm? Didn't I say Jaclyn? Oh, Jaclyn, sorry, Jaclyn, it's Jaclyn. Thank you. She was actually in a, in a program with Michelle and they're connected to something. We were in together and had just a moving service and much more fun reception in honor of her. So just, just didn't want to let the opportunity go by without just mentioning her and a great, great soul, great person. And left had a great impact on a lot of young people. And then finally, in, in honor of Black History Month, I, I've been going around reading. I told you I was gonna do that. My, the book of choice for me this year at our elementary schools has been the story of George Crumb's potato predicament because he is the one who invented potato chips. Potato chips. So I'll put a little, little picture collage up there. There's his picture. And that's me in a couple of different classrooms. There you go. There you go. Thank you, Trustee Church, for the, for the, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much for the, for the, the unit to help put that out there. But just something has been good for the kids. The kids have enjoyed it. I've had a wonderful time with them. And thank you, JJ, for getting my picture up there. All right, Madam Superintendent?
All righty. Thank you very much, Madam President. So I was very honored to go to our Honor Orchestra. And that was over at the Pioneer Center. We also had Honor Band and then Honor Choir. And I want to do a huge shout out to our Chief Academic Officer, Amy Burfell. And then we also had two guest stars who came from out of state. One actually came up from Southern Nevada, Barbara James, and then Lissandra Booth, Dr. Booth. And both of them did a phenomenal job conducting our orchestra. But it was just absolutely beautiful to see our students performing a live performance because we haven't been able to do that for a couple of years. Had a great visit over at Dilworth with Trustee Minetto and Principal Pashudo. Went over to Lenz, had a great visit with Principal Keller. And then we got to go over to Piccolo. And Principal Birak knows that when we go over to Piccolo, we are going to go to the horse barn. So we were able to see Theodore the Goat, who's best friends with Chili, and Buttercup. And I haven't checked on Buttercup yet, but Buttercup had to go to the hospital for little hooves. So we have to check on that. But Julie Parks, Julie Parks is a swim teacher over at Piccolo. And she is just absolutely amazing. She also happens to be the spouse of Dr. Parks. But she is absolutely wonderful and we did some really cool things over there. AACT, I had my shirt on for AACT earlier today, Arts Careers Academy. And it actually looked like ACDC t-shirt, but it really wasn't. And I went over there to see Rachel Robinson and she did heart origami. And so I would ask if you all can go over and see the beautiful artwork over at AACT. It's absolutely phenomenal. And then also my Piccolo shirts I have on there. And then tomorrow, hug a bus driver. Check, check, make sure it's okay first.
Yes, yeah.
But yes.
A wave at least.
National Bus Driver Appreciation Date. And they really, really need our kudos tomorrow.
They need our appreciation. So put something out there, email people, put it on your social, something.
And finally, I have to say something a little bit controversial too. I'm gonna have to go with a marmot is absolutely the cutest mascot. Absolutely.
Respectfully disagreeing. I love it. That's what we do. All right, I think that's all of our reports. Any closing public comments? JJ?
Donna Wood.
Welcome, Ms. Wood. No, no, she'll get, don't worry about it. She'll get you started. Your mic is on, you're good to go.
Hi, my name is Donna Wood and I'm a teacher here in Washoe County School District. I'm glad to hear there was some communication with the Governor regarding the bus crisis that we're in. But I'm very disappointed, the first time I've spoke out, because I'm very disappointed in that decision regarding buses. Your solution to the bus driver shortage is to remove transportation from approximately 75 schools on a rolling basis. No transportation will result in blocked access to school for hundreds of students. This should never have been an option. This is a most inequitable decision. The district had no control over the loss of instructional days due to the COVID pandemic, smoke days and snow days. You do, however, have full control on this decision. The bus driver shortage is nothing new. You've known this has been an issue for years, even prior to the, to COVID. I understand that by law, our students with IEPs and CIT, Children in Transition, will continue to receive transportation services. However, should we not make access to school a priority for all students regardless of a legal requirement? What about doing what's right for our students and ensuring transportation to all who need it? Those coming from homes with vehicles and those without? The students most impacted will be those from our poor families, those without vehicles or whose parents are without the means and financial resources to pay for alternative ways for their children to get to school. Our most disenfranchised group that we so often speak about protecting. With COVID, smoke days and snow days, all our, our students were impacted. With this current decision, only certain students will miss school. How do you explain to children who look out their window this morning and saw their bus picking up some of their friends, but not them? How will you explain that they are not as important as those other students that have IEPs, that are children in transition, those buses stopping at the same bus stops, yet only some can get on? Knowing that their peers, sorry, get emotional about this. Knowing their peers are at school learning and they are not is but one of the many consequences. This decision creates food insecurities. Many students rely on school for breakfast and lunch. Without the means to get to school, these students will go hungry. Students will be left home alone because not all parents can take off for weeks, even on a rolling basis. Teachers have been working diligently to close the gaps. And we've done that with a lot of our students. I plead with you to come up with a better solution that ensures all kids have access to school.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
You're welcome. Casey Thelander?
Welcome, Mr. Thelander.
It's nice to see your guys' faces. So I'd like to just speak on the, also the behalf of the bus driver situation. And this isn't like a direct attack towards you, Angie, but I remember you making a comment earlier this year about how like exciting it was to spend $77 million. Well, if it's a budget crisis, at $77 million, at, if you just did a $20,000 a year pay raise, that's $2 million for 100 bus drivers, 100 bus drivers. And I just find it like really perplexing that on the bucket, our state chose priorities, technology, instructional material and professional development. development. Well, how useful is that if they can't show up to school? Like, the first priority should be getting them to school, not what you're going to be doing in the school, because that makes no sense if they can't get there. I mean, we're fighting a losing battle here. Like, something has to happen. Like, we got it. There's got to be a gift somewhere. I mean, I've, I heard Sisalak brag about how much weed tax money he has, right, from all the weed money. Well, I know that helped build a couple of schools out here. So can't help pay the bus drivers more? I mean, if it's really a budget issue, we should just do what we have to do as a community to make this push forward. Like, even Sisalak should do that. Like, because getting the kids to school should be the number one priority, especially like she touched on, is food, right? I've volunteered before. And it's sad to see some of these kids come to school, and that might be the only hot meal that they have that day. Like, it is heartbreaking that school is a release for some of these kids. And now they're stuck at home. It's really sad. I really think it should be our first priority. And if it means that we need to take out of the budget, you know, just so we don't get the trees trimmed, I'm pretty sure the community can come together and help take care of these schools' grounds, or whatever we need to do to make this happen. Because this shouldn't be happening right now. It's, and like she said, there's going to be so many kids sitting at home by themselves, which can't happen. I just, I hope you guys come up with some sort of plan quickly, because this is, it's really, there is no excuse for it. It should have been, this should not even be a thing right now. Touching a little bit on, like, the COVID thing, our principal is doing a, and this is just going to be quick, you guys, but, so we have a family night, and he's doing last names, like, per hour, A through F for an hour, G through M for an hour, N through Z for an hour. Like, I don't understand the concept of that. When all those kids that come home to us parents, why can't we just, all of us parents be together? All the same kids go to the same school together, and then come home to all the same parents. How much sense does that actually make? Like, there's so much just confusion and BS at my school. I'd like somebody to look into it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Thielander.
Pablo Nava Duran.
Welcome, Mr. Duran.
Okay, so.
Wait, just keep your mic on, sir. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I did talk about the, at the commission meeting. I will say once, I will not say again, everyone really watch about, that we call, just go watch, Washoe County's commission meeting for three-year parliaments. So, back to the school district. So I know we have a bus shortage issue, and it's like, it kind of shocked it to me that many of school bus drivers were not going pick up students from school. That will increase the absence team, absent for student, and probably fail the class by not going to school because of a bus situation. And, and I did talk about on the commission meeting, that instead of sending National Guard to the police station, I think we should send the National Guard to the Washoe County School District for petition to help the fellow students to increase, to have a decrease, decrease tardiness, or increase, so to have a graduation on time. So, it's very sad to me. And I think the Washoe County School teachers should send a letter to the Governor, say like, "We need a National Guard to the petition to fill the bus order. If not, if not, so I think the very most important thing is to, maybe we should recommend to rezonate of a school next year of my neighborhood, because my neighborhood is negative impacts for this, the massive school from, from their neighborhood to their home, to the Miami Beach High School, or hotspots. If I cannot get a bus, I have to take ROTC, Wild Child and Wild 56, all the way to Walmart Super Center, and then walk all, one hour to the school, walk back to the home and wait for the bus, and then take the bus, go on a public petition, and go home. So I think the solution is to, maybe we some, I think district board needs to tell zoning device community to reconsider rezoning of this neighborhood from the Miami Beach to Worcester, Huck, or Spark High Schools. And I do know Huck and Spark High School is over three miles away, yes. But I think that we don't need a public petition for this student to form, so they can take the ROTC public petition to go to and from school, increase the revenue of ROTC. And I do know the Worcester High School community had an obligation to move from neighborhood to Worcester High School. So the best bet is a reason to Huck and Spark High School in the next few years. And I follow the zoning device community guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
The board received emails from Sarah Dawkins, Will Harper, and Kathleen Little Bollerton.
Okay, thank you very much. This includes our meeting for tonight. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Our next meeting is on March 8th, right here at 2:00 PM. We're adjourned.